All right. Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the July 17, 2018 City Council meeting. Please take your seats. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Reddick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rorback.
Mayor Penrose.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Rise for the pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. There is nothing to report out from our recent closed session meeting. City manager, do you have updates to counsel?
Yes, ma'am. This evening we have two, starting first with Danielle Sanderson from the city manager's office.
Good evening, council. I wanted to let you and the community know about National Night Out. It's going to take place on Tuesday, August 7, and it's a nationwide event that brings together police and the community. The city will give people who want to host a block party a $100 gift card to support
Danielle, can you give us the times on that?
Yes. Usually the block parties begin about 5:00 in the evening, and then both city staff, council, the library, and the sheriff's office will go around to each of the parties. Because it's a weekday, they tend to wrap up around 9:00 o'clock or so. The city will waive permit fees, and if you need barricades to block off your street for safety, we'll provide those. Applications are available online in all the city facilities, and the deadline to apply is August 3. My contact information is on the screen above, so if anyone needs to get ahold of me, you can either email or call, or just stop by City Hall.
Great. Are we going to put an ad in the paper about that?
There was.
There is one.
Yes.
Great.
And also, Mayor, in response to your question earlier, I wanted to let everybody know Concerts in the Park will be Saturday, MacDutra Plaza, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We're going to have Rose and Hits Waves Unplugged, so it's an acoustic jazz group. It should be very good. We have AAUW providing refreshments and senior co-siders as well. There'll also be a shuttle that picks folks up from the senior center and will drive them to MacDutra for the duration of the concert and back again.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also forgot to mention that the jail opening is Thursday night this evening. 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we're opening our historic jail.
And next up briefly, we just want to make sure that folks know, we held our first community conversation about housing just on Sunday, a couple days ago. Nearly 100 community members participated. Folks shared personal stories about challenges that they have with housing, and they collaborated about solutions. We have a lot to go over, got a ton of input, and we're noting that there's some distinctions between short and longer-range solutions, so we'll be checking in with council about that in August or September. And also just to note, the session summary will be posted on the website soon. Folks can continue to stay engaged that way and be invited to the second conversation, which we intend to host in September, and we'll firm up that date soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. I also wanted to remind people, and I should have done this earlier, but remind people that if you have not signed up for San Mateo County SMC Alert System, please go online and do that. It's your way to get information about what's going on in our county in the case of a disaster or in the case of a traffic accident or a mountain lion, which we apparently have lots of. Okay, we'll move on to public forum. For public forum, I have three speakers. The first is Maureen Lennon, followed by Michael Akana.
I'd like to give up my time for Julie. She is the first person I want to follow.
Julie?
The clock stops. Good evening. My name is Julie Barr, and I currently live at 792 Pillars Cetus Avenue in Half Moon Bay. I'm here tonight representing the coastside pickleball community to speak with you about the process for allocating the Adcock Center for sponsored Parks and Recreation Department activities. You've recently received many letters and emails from citizens about the proposal to reduce the time allotted for pickleball play at Adcock on Fridays from 3 hours to 90 minutes to accommodate a request by the Coastside Women's Club to play bridge at Adcock during this same time period. We have been told by city council members that pickleball occurs five days a week at Adcock, so we should, quote, "give up our Friday time slot to accommodate the bridge players," unquote. We believe that this solution doesn't address the real issues. The Adcock Center is the only place to play pickleball on the coast side. Pickleball is the most popular activity offered by the Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation Department. Pickleball is the only team sport sponsored by Parks and Rec that caters to seniors of all abilities. Pickleball has been played at Adcock for three years, and during that time, the number of players has increased from less than 10 to over 60, most of whom are seniors. And many coastsiders who play pickleball have significant disabilities. One of our regular Friday players even plays pickleball while wearing a portable oxygen backpack. Only Friday pickleball sessions are for experienced and advanced players, and since there are only two pickleball courts at Adcock, players often have to wait to play a game. By contrast, the CWC Bridge Players only require an indoor venue to play bridge. To date, the process for assigning the Adcock Center to various recreational programs has been a capricious process that pits recreational groups against one another. Pickleball is currently played at Adcock on Fridays from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Coastside Women's Club has asked to play bridge at Adcock on Fridays from 1:00 to 4:30 p.m. We are told that the Coastside Women's Club was offered the use of Adcock for bridge from 2:30 to 5:30 on Fridays, but that they insisted on playing at the earlier time because, quote, "pickleball players have five days a week," while the bridge players currently have one assigned to them, and that they need to be done playing bridge by 4:30 to get home earlier. We are told that the Adcock Center is the only facility on the coast large enough to accommodate the bridge group with their eight tables and chairs. We are told that the city soon plans to sign a binding contract with the Coastside Women's Club for Friday bridge play. The coastside pickleball community is grateful to the city of Half Moon Bay for allowing us to play pickleball at Adcock Center for over the past year. We understand that Adcock is a shared community resource and that no one group is necessarily entitled to use it over another for recreational purposes. But pitting seniors with different interests against one another over the process of allocating parks and recreation resources is not only demeaning to seniors but sends a message that they are not valued members of this community. We have no quarrel with the bridge players. Many of our pickleball players are also bridge players and would welcome expanded opportunities to play bridge here on the coast side. But we are concerned about the lack of clarity, transparency, and fairness in the process for assigning the Adcock Center for various community recreational activities.
Thank you, Julie. Can you wind up?
I'm summarizing. What we are asking for from the city council and Parks and Recs is, one, to direct Parks and Recs' commission to work with the Parks and Recs Department staff to develop a clear set of guidelines for new groups petitioning to use the Adcock Center, and to take into consideration the community demand for recreational activities when prioritizing requests to use this space. Two, to consider increasing, rather than decreasing, the amount of time that Adcock is available for pickleball, perhaps Wednesdays, Saturdays, and even evenings to accommodate the growing demand. And three, to work with the coastside pickleball community to develop public-private partnerships to expand access to indoor and outdoor pickleball facilities on the coast, such as the Boys and Girls Club and the Cabrillo Unified School District facilities.
Thanks.
And finally, to consider including pickleball courts in the future design of any new parks within Half Moon Bay. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And is Michael Akana going to speak?
I am. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Barr. My name is Michael Akana, resident of 324 Correa Street. I am a resident homeowner and business owner in Half Moon Bay. I am speaking in support of the city's pickleball program. I have 11 years' experience with the YMCA and over 35 years' experience working with nonprofit human service agencies. I have a master's degree in recreation. Pickleball is America's fastest-growing sport. Pickleball improves agility and coordination, oxygenates the blood, teaches technique and strategy, all in a supportive and fun social environment. Personally, I would like to see more opportunities for drop-in physical play, whether pickup games for basketball or volleyball or other sports. But pickleball is our city's adult sports program. Pickleball is the only team sport offered to adults by the Half Moon Bay Recreation Department. Fortunately, the program is doing well and gaining popularity. We have a diverse group of players, diverse by age, diverse by ethnicity, diverse by economic and social backgrounds, diverse by levels of play, and diverse by physical ability. We have committed players who have overcome challenges with vision, movement, and breathing to compete at an advanced level. Friday afternoon pickleball is the highlight of my exercise routine, giving me an opportunity to play with advanced local players. Some of them are not able to play at other offered times. Thank you for providing pickleball players use of the Ted Adcock Center for pickleball and for including pickleball as a program of the recreation center. While I understand that more sedentary activities may be preferred by some of my fellow residents, I hope the city will not only accommodate those who seek exercise in a social setting, but that you may also embrace our pickleball program in its success in improving the health and lives of our city's residents. And I ask that the Friday afternoon schedule be preserved. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public forum?
May I still speak?
You can speak.
Okay. A few things that I think was left out, I'm kind of bad living here. We understand that we tried to negotiate. We don't want to disclude the bridge players from playing, so we offered to split the difference, you know, half hour, right? They could start at 1:30 or...
What time do they want to start?
At 2:00, and then we, you know, split the difference. Instead of them getting a whole hour of ours, get a half hour of ours and give us the extra half hour. That's what we had asked. Evidently, that was not considered. The other thing is, this game is the fastest-growing game in the U.S., if not the world. It's headed, it is definitely headed for the Olympics at some point. Other communities are bringing it in, creating dedicated courts, nets, and everything for their senior players, but that's not to say that it's only for seniors. Young people love to play it, too. We would really love to see our community start to work closer with the school district so that the Boys and Girls Club, which we were kind of told we were going to get some time over there, never happened because of bad relationships. Maybe that can be fixed. Talk with them, work things out with them. The kids are in school all day, and that gym sits empty. We would love to have the opportunity to play there. Please do what you can to help give us more time rather than taking time away from us. This is important to our health and well-being. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mariah Gregorius.
My goodness, I didn't expect this tonight. I am the cause of this unhappiness. I represent the bridge players. I want to say that we have a unique opportunity in Half Moon Bay. We have a new resident who was a gold life master at bridge. She's an ACBL instructor and tournament director who wants to expand opportunities for bridge, for duplicate bridge, which is a very different game here in Half Moon Bay. We have joined together to try to create a game. It takes three and a half hours to play a standard duplicate game. I looked at the, we looked at the schedule at the Adcock, and on the days that pickleball plays, they end at 2:00 every day, except Monday, when they ended at 2:00. We looked at Monday, and we were told that we could not do it then because there were martial arts at 3:30. Friday seemed to be the best day. We said we wanted to end at 5:00, starting at 1:30, and asked that pickleball end at 1:00 on Friday and expand Monday by an hour so they would lose no time so that we could have a three-and-a-half-hour chunk. We have 120 people so far on our list of people who we're going to contact around this new bridge program. Right now, people who want to play duplicate bridge have to go over the hill. I go to Palo Alto to play, as do the other duplicate players in this town. This is a great opportunity. We're going to have lessons. You know, I contacted Elaine Roddy before I contacted the city to tell her about this plan because I did not want any misunderstandings. I am shocked by what's going on. You knew how to call me.
Talk about this?
It's just amazing. But at any rate, we are busy. We're developing a curriculum. We have, we're ready to contact people. I think it would be very exciting, and it's senseless to have this kind of unhappiness and misunderstanding. There are plenty of hours during the week before pickleball to add hours. You know, they could play on Wednesday afternoons. I don't understand this. But at any rate, I am sorry that everybody's upset. I wish someone could have said, "Let's get together and work this out," but here we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah. I think that's it for public comment. I just... Ah. No. Ah, Elaine Roddy. Sorry, Elaine.
Thank you. I just had one point, and that is, first of all, I don't, I'm on recreation commission, and I have no idea until maybe a day ago that a subject like this would not come before the recreation commission. I heard by way of emails that, from Dr. Penrose, that this was a staff decision, wasn't even going to come to the city council, which made us all believe that we don't, we're not worth anything. The staff is just going to decide how to do that. That's my first objective objection. The second objection is that we're comparing pickleball to any other large activity, like the band, or like the bridge, or like Zumba. 50 people can come in this gym in one hour, or with the band, two hours, and get more activity than pickleball can. Pickleball is like tennis. You go sign up for a tennis court, you get it for an hour and a half. 25 or 30 people come into this gym, and it may, they may play for five minutes, sit down for a half an hour, then someone else will go on, and they may play for 20 minutes if their team is good enough or bad enough. So we're comparing apples and oranges, and I really think this is a bigger decision than to give it to the staff. I know the staff. I know they're very competent, but this city has only taken on the recreation department for two years. Before that, the Boys and Girls Club had it. Before that, the city of, I was saying Carlos had it. I think we owe the sports and the entire recreation program and the recreation commission the ability to weigh in on this. And in answer to Mariah's question, she sent me an email. I sent an email back, and I said, "You're talking to the wrong person. I am not on the scheduling program." If she would have asked me what I thought about it, I would have told her. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say, in response to some of the comments made tonight, our staff is totally competent and totally able to write up a recreation schedule. That's what they do for business. That's what they have their degrees in. I am confident that our staff can come up with scheduling. The policy is what you're talking about, and city council will be reviewing a policy decision, making a policy decision sometime in the near future. We won't get to it in August. We won't get it probably until early in the fall. But staff is currently preparing a policy paper for us to review and for us to decide upon, so it doesn't matter to me that the fact that I play bridge has nothing to do with my feeling about what should happen. And Elaine on the recreation committee, because she plays pickleball, I'm sure she's not going to be prejudiced toward pickleball players. We have so many competing interests in this city. We have so little space. And I think someone said something about getting the Boys and Girls Club on board. I think that's one of the things, the citizens ought to be demanding of the Boys and Girls Club, and they ought to be asking the school system, "Why aren't you providing us space for some of these activities?" So we'll get it decided, we'll get it decided in the fairest possible way as soon as we can. I'm sorry that this had to come to such an unpleasant place as it is tonight. It's really, it's sad because I'd like to see everybody playing pickleball, playing bridge, jumping hoops, whatever you want to do. All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar, and I've been asked to pull item Can I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar. Items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1F, 1G, 1H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q.
Can I have a second?
Before a second, I'd like to just make a very brief comment about 1G. 1G is the IT contract that the city has let out to Stepford. I have no idea whether they're doing a good job. I think they are, but the point that I want to emphasize is that they have not gone out on bid since the year 2000. And so I hope that the city realizes that this is just not good policy and that sometime before this contract expires in June of 2019, we have an RFP set out to get IT services for the city. Stepford, of course, can apply for it, and I hope they get it, but I think that we should not let 18 years elapse with a single contractor without them proving their worth. Otherwise, I second the consent items that Debbie Reddick just said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor. I know it's a little uncustomary, but I wonder if we might take up 1E now rather than at the end of the meeting, because I do know that we have somebody here from the Office of Emergency Services.
Sure, that's fine. We have public comment. Can we take that first? Yeah, Paul Gregorius on item 1E.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Paul Gregorius, and I live here in Half Moon Bay. Up until about three years ago, I was a very active volunteer in the emergency preparedness movement, shall we say, on the coast side. In my last year, before the previous coastside director dismissed me from the Coastside Emergency Corps, I spent over 1,100 hours of volunteer time in this area. But I do keep in touch with some of my ham radio friends. I'm so very active in that hobby. And I'm told there's been very little progress since our last director departed and that we are still in a crying need for emergency preparedness, not unpreparedness, on the coast side. Things like a water supply in case of emergency. We're still without the ability to sustain life in our community through the distribution of water for any more than two or three days. In an earthquake, it'll be 10 to 15 days before we get help. With 3% of the county's population, we don't get much attention here, not to mention north, east, and south access to this community will undoubtedly be blocked in a major earthquake. I think the $68,000 that you're proposing to invest again in the Office of Emergenc, well, sharing the cost with the Office of Emergency Services of this individual could be better spent on investing in a well-trained and experienced city employee who can take on the emergency preparedness task. I would urge you to look carefully at this issue and not just go right ahead and say, "Let's continue what was here before." I read the list of items that are enunciated for what OES is going to do for its money, and I was not impressed. Please give this your full consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Comment?
I think the city manager mentioned there was somebody here from the county.
I'm truly happy to take any questions or follow-up on Mr. Gregorius' comments we heard this evening. We also have Sandra Ricky here, who has assumed some of the responsibilities that Carlos used to perform since his recent departure. But I think, you know, his points are heard, and I can rest assured that we're going to consider those. and I can rest assured that we're going to consider those and really look, as we're doing with all our contracts, at how do we build in really solid performance standards into those so that we're really getting value for the taxpayer dollar here in Half Moon Bay?
I want to second what David just said. I really think we need to improve our response to emergencies. I've been on the Coast Side Emergency Action Program. I've seen what's available. I've talked to Carlos. I think it's time to really up the game, because when the big one comes, we're all going to be in deep doo-doo.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
I move per staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is that three, but? Moving a little bit out of order, we're going to move up item 3A? 3B? 3E? Thank you. So we'll hear a staff report on 3E, please. Okay, we're not going to have a staff report. Councilmember Riddick is going to speak to the issue.
Yes, I'm very pleased that this is before us this evening. And we had talked about this at our last meeting over the separation of families issue. And I think we have a great resolution before us, and it was actually constructed by a couple of our young staff. One of them is Jonathan Royssman, who's our administrative assistant to the city clerk, and also Michaela McMahon, who is our city clerk summer intern. So they took it upon themselves to draw up this resolution, and it's really beautiful. We're really grateful for their efforts. So I would move that we adopt the resolution opposing the Trump administration's zero-tolerance immigration policy of separating children from their parents detained at the U.S.-Mexico border.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to item 2A.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dennis Joffe, Finance Manager. I have a very brief item for you this evening. Can you go to the first slide, please? We'd like you to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 sewer service charges. Direct the staff to file the assessment rule and authorize the county controller to place the assessment charges on the County of San Mateo property tax rule. So for fiscal years 2018-19, there are no changes in the sewer rates, and there haven't been for the past four years. The last rate change was 9% in fiscal year 2013-2014. We're expecting to conduct a sewer rate study in the fiscal year 2018-19, which may result in changes for the following fiscal year. The finance staff assessed 3,273 properties within the city of Half Moon Bay, and we're projecting that a little over 4.5 million in sewer revenues in 2018-19. I'd like to thank Paula Krog, accounting technician. She did the lion's share of the work for this, as she does every year. And so, as I just said, please conduct the public hearing, adopt a resolution for the service charges. Again, there had been no change in the rates, and direct staff to file an assessment with the county controller office. Thank you.
Dennis, could you just give a brief summary about how we develop our sewer charges? What it's based on?
Yeah, well, the rates themselves were based on a study back in 2013-14, which looked at our costs and determined how much the rates would have to be to offset those. For each given fiscal year following that, we have a program, it's called Calcad, that. And we download two different databases. One is the database for all the properties within the city of Half Moon Bay. That comes from the county assessor's office. And the other has to do with water usage. That's how the sewer rates are determined for residential homes. They take, I believe, December and February water usage, because those happen to be the winter months where it's assumed that there is more rain, and so there is less watering of gardens and yards, because that water doesn't go into the sewer system. So we shouldn't charge people for, if we're using the water as the basis on water that they use to water their gardens and yards. So it's water in, water out, and we use those two bills to extrapolate a one-year water usage. Whereas for commercial properties, since there's no gardens or yards, then we take the full 12 months and have more of an actual basis. And then we apply the rates to that. And certain types of businesses have different multipliers, like restaurants, who might have some oils and more thick substances. They generally get charged more than certain other places that don't.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're open for public hearing, but I don't have any calls. So can I get a motion?
I think we have to close the public hearing first.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-19 sewer service charges. There's no change in rates. And direct staff to file an assessment with the county controller's office to place the assessment charges on the county's property tax rule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. We're moving on to item 2B. It's a public hearing to receive input from the community regarding draft maps of voting district boundaries for a city council district-based election system.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Tonight is the third public hearing in the city's transition to district elections, and the first public hearing that the public and the council has an opportunity to review draft maps. For anyone who hasn't picked up a copy, there's a stack on the table over there of all of the draft maps that our demographer will be going over. And I would like to introduce Dr. Doug Johnson, our demographer, and he will lead us through the presentation. Thanks.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'll go through this fairly quickly, and then happy to come back and answer any questions you or the public have. So, let's see. There we go. So we're in kind of the second stage of this project. The first stage, the city already went through of holding two initial hearings before the draft maps were released. The city also put out tools for the public to use to submit maps. And I'm happy to say that actually half of the maps we're looking at today came from residents, and then the other half came from our firm as your demographers. And the process required by law is for there to be at least two hearings to talk about the draft maps, consider revisions. And so this is the first of those two hearings to review and look at possible revisions to the draft maps. These maps, it should be noted, are not going to be used for this year's election. It's way too late for that. They will start being used for the 2020 election. And then Half Moon Bay and many jurisdictions across the state are in this odd situation late in the decade where we're drawing lines. In this case, two of the districts will hold an election in 2020. Then the lines will actually be updated based on the 2020 census data before the other districts hold elections in 2022. Okay. In terms of how we're looking at the maps and evaluating the maps, there are really two sets of rules. The first are the federal laws. These are requirements. Each district in the map has to have essential and equal population. There's some plus or minus a few percent, but it's pretty close to perfectly balanced. And in a small jurisdiction like this, that can be very challenging, because the move of one census block or one city block can throw those out of balance, since the districts overall are fairly small. We also have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which really says if there's a neighborhood that is heavily concentrated, one of what the law calls a protected class, meaning Latinos, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, or Native Americans. If there's a neighborhood where one of those groups is particularly concentrated, we can't divide it in a way that dilutes their voting strength. And at the same time, we can't draw purely based on race. With law says, "No racial gerrymandering." Race cannot be what they call the predominant factor. It'd be one thing to look at, but we really want to focus on neighborhoods, not on ethnicity. So we obviously are reviewing the maps and making sure the maps that come before you comply with those requirements. Where the decisions come from, for both the public and for you ultimately, is finding the map that best meets the redistricting principles or redistricting goals. And these are goals, not requirements. So we want to try to respect communities' interest. We want to try to keep the districts compact and contiguous and follow major roads. Those three are really so that they're easy for the voters to understand. When they want to go knock on doors, we want them to easily know which doors to knock on, and that's a lot easier to do if it's a major road to a major road, than this block, not that block. Then we also can look at respecting the voters' choices. This is really letting the voters decide which council members have earned reelection or not earned it. And this is what we do when we try to avoid putting two council members in the same district. If you put two in the same district, it doesn't matter what the voters think. They can't reelect both. If we have council members in separate districts, then they can. Of course, we're moving from five council members to four council members with an at-large mayor, so there will be at least one pairing. And actually, three of these maps have two council members paired in two separate districts. And then, plain future growth, I mentioned, just so that it's not a surprise in 2021. These lines will be in place just for one election, so we're not really looking at that. But in 2021, when the council revisits the lines, those lines will be in place for a whole decade. So that'll be more of a consideration at that point. So when we're looking at these maps, we're trying to, all of them with one note that I'll mention, comply with the requirements. Now, the thought is which of these, or which revised version of one of these best balances the goals and achieves the best balance among those goals. Just to the point of the protected classes, this is not an area like we often see in, you know, traditional voting rights cases or in the Central Valley or something like that, where one part of the city is heavily one protected class, and the other is not. You can see the red is 75% Latino in the left-hand chart. Yellow is 65% to 75% of the eligible voters are Latino, and green is 50% to 65%. There isn't a neighborhood that is, I mean, it's no surprise to you, but this is numbers, so what you probably already knew, there isn't a neighborhood that you would say, "This is the Latino neighborhood." That one long red census block in the southeast is obviously almost no one there. It's the challenge of these maps is of the two or three people in there. I think two of them are Latino. But that two or three people's not going to impact a district. Similarly, with the Asian-Americans on the right in this chart, the African-American chart looks similar. There's no concentration. There's no neighborhood where we'd say they're concentrated. I mentioned that equal population is tough in a small jurisdiction, because moving one city block can swing one district in or out of balance. Same time, the city's unusual shape also presented a challenge. And kudos to those who took on the work of figuring out the online tool, which is powerful, but admittedly not very user-friendly. It's just the best one out there right now, and that doesn't say it's all that great. But it does work, and we've got some people using it. We also put out these paper maps that the city's shape made very hard to make very usable. But some brave souls did take that on, and we got some very, not in tone of comments, but the comments we got were very thoughtful. And so we appreciate the efforts of people to submit those. Which brings us to the first map, draft 101. In each of these cases, I'm showing the whole city on the right, and then kind of zooming in on the middle of the city where the details matter more, because it's more densely populated. And you can see, in 101, strength to south, we really have the south end of the city really united in District 4, which comes up essentially as far as it can until it reaches a population number. And then two and three roughly in the middle, and then one in the north, joined by two. Again, oh, and I should note, the details are a little hard to see on these PDFs, especially in the handouts. On the city website, we actually have a link to a special site, drawhmbe.org. And there is an interactive map where people can zoom in and out. They can type in an address and see exactly where that is. They can overlay the different maps. So there's a lot more flexibility if you go to the interactive review map than we can do on a slide. One thing to note, in this map, District 3 comes across PCH, and you can see the blue area to the west. That's the Safeway and the shopping mall, and then the houses behind the mall. So that's the area it's picking up. It's an odd shape, but it's because that parcel in that area is an odd shape. Next map, map 102. This is similarly wrestling with the challenge we have, which is there's a two and a little over two districts' population west of 101, I'm sorry, not 101, of PCH, Highway 1. And then there's a little short of two districts' population east of PCH. And so in this case, again, District 1 is coming across. District 4, in this case, down south, is staying west of PCH and using PCH as the border. And you can see the impacts of these different changes. In the District 3, you only have to come over and pick up, I think it's three city blocks in this case, because they're more dense population. And then draft 3 is actually quite similar to draft 1. It comes from a different resident. A little bit of a difference in the border between 1 and 2. One just picks up the whole north, more in the far north, instead of coming over and getting the middle clump there. Slightly different area picked up by District 3 coming west of PCH. It's actually the area just south of the Safeway Shopping Mall, not the mall itself. Then District 4, this was drawn by NDC. The 4, 5, and 6 were drawn by us. And this was really inspired by a letter from one of your residents, someone who tried her hand at the online tool and the numbers, but then more or less said, "Can I just send you an idea, and you guys draw it," which we certainly welcome and embrace. And the idea that she presented was there's the senior community, I don't know, forgive me if I mispronounce this, Kanjata Cove? Kanjata? You know, I live right next to La Canjata, and I didn't want to go there. But, okay, Kanjata Cove. And then she pointed out that the senior community has very different, in her letter she spells out, very different interests than the Ocean Colony kind of Gulf neighborhood to the north of it, and perhaps would be a better pair with Leslie Gardens, the senior housing more downtown. And so here you get draft 104, And so here you get Draft 104, where the Canyata Cove down south then is added to District 3 as that extra population that District 3 needs to pick up from west of PCH. Then District 1 picks up the extra population in the north, probably the most compact map of the 6 maps before us. One thing that may jump out, if you look in the part on the left, District 2 kind of wraps around District 4 at the north, and this also happened in 101. It's because there's an odd-shaped census block right along PCH. So that little pink part that's sticking down on the east side of District 4, that's a really big census block that goes up and around, there's not really a way to avoid Going to 105. Again, this one's putting Canyata Cove with Leslie Gardens. You can see how District 3 wraps around, it's a little bit different. District 3 is getting more on both sides of PCH when it gets into the center of the city. And here you've got 1 and 2 clearly divided by PCH. So a nice, easy-to-understand border between the two of them. Yeah, this is the first of the two maps, that there are two districts completely west of PCH and one district completely east of PCH, and then just the one district that crosses over District 3 to pick up the extra population. Then the last of the draft maps at this point, 106, similarly has two districts completely in west of PCH, one district, District 1, completely east, and then District 3 crossing over. But in this case, District 3 is not picking up Canyata Cove. Canyata Cove is with Ocean Colony, get a more compact District 4, and a more compact District 3. And District 3 is much more oriented around the center part of the city, coming up essentially from Kelly, south of Kelly, picking up both sides of PCH. So it's a quick swing through the maps. If people haven't had a chance to look at that interactive viewer, I do suggest they do so. It's got a lot of things you can overlay, the lines on a satellite image, on a street map, on a map that has a lot of businesses labeled and things like that, so it is a great way to see more details. And we're open to any comments and directions that you or the public have tonight.
We have some public speakers. Maybe we should hear from them before council?
Sure.
Okay. Maria Gregoriev, followed by Mike Ferrera.
Hi. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the proposed districts. Six draft plans are up for review, and two should be disqualified because they're gerrymandered. Gerrymandering is a practice intended to establish a political advantage for one party or group, and it is unlawful. Instead of geographically compact political districts, gerrymandering results in stretched-out, oddly-shaped districts with a concentration of people with certain characteristics or beliefs. If you drive south on Route 1 from the firehouse to the southern border of town, there's only a narrow strip of land east of Route 1. According to the census, only 14 people live there, only three of them are citizens of voting age, and none are registered to vote. Two of the plans before you, number 104 and 105, are drawn so that Canyata Cove, a mobile home park for people over 55 years of age, is made in the same district as our housing for seniors and low-income people in the central part of town. These two areas are connected by that narrow strip of land to the east of Highway 1 with only 14 people. If Canyata Cove is removed from this district that contains Ocean Colony, the result is to increase even further the average income of the residents of the district containing Ocean Colony, and to make that population even more homogeneous. The purpose of districting was to increase the opportunity for Latinos to elect a candidate of their choice to the city council. However, districting also increases the opportunity for the wealthy to elect their candidates. Do not allow gerrymandering to further tilt the scales. Reject Proposals 104 and 105. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Mike Ferrera.
Good evening, Mayor Penrose, Councilmembers Robach and Reddick. I've looked through a lot of these numbers for a period of time, and it's really great to have all this data. But if anyone ever thought we were going to be able to get a district that would have a majority of Hispanic voters, we shouldn't have started this, because those of us that have been around for a while knew we couldn't do that. We might do it in population, we'd never do it in voters. It's just the nature of the town. When Bert Sol and I did a citizenship program, oh, I don't know, about a dozen years ago, to create new citizens, we actually went out and we hired a consultant and put on things at the IDES. And we did create, I think, 108 citizens. Of those, we had one Canadian, the guy that owned McDonald's, and I think we had three Hispanics, and all the rest were Portuguese. So this problem of getting our local Hispanic folks to become citizens is a big one. It's a tough hill to climb, we know what Congress is like. But to the degree that we could assist that, I would like to see us do that, and maybe over the long haul, this kind of thing could have an impact. But for all of that, I took a look at all these maps, just to see what made some sense, and I would just express a favorite for 106. Just seems to make sense to me, can't go beyond that. And wish you all the best of luck, and actually, I probably wouldn't have spent all that time if I'd known we'd have to redraw them again in two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I think it might be helpful to look at the data charts, if you could just explain those a little bit, what we're looking at?
Sure, happy to. There's a lot of data, obviously, because we want to provide data for anyone that wants to look at it. First of all, at the top, the deviation and percent deviation, these are based on total population, because the law is we have to have an equal number of people in each district, and you're not exactly a fast-growing community, so they're fairly close, even though they're still, they're 2010 census data. But the key thing is, the difference between the smallest and the largest can't be more than 10%. And so these maps are all pretty good on that, except for 103, which does, it's just over 10%. So if we go with 103, we have to make a small adjustment to clean it up and bring it below 10%. But the others, 104 is also about 9%, which is okay, but getting out near the range, and then the rest are all 1, 2, or 3, 4%, they're all fine. The other categories, then you get a breakdown of total population by ethnicity. The next category is the key one for the Voting Rights Act, which is citizen voting-age population. The court's focus on that is the best measure of eligible voters. And it comes from the Census Bureau, but it comes from an annual survey that they do. It is a survey, and especially when we break it down into small geography like we have here, its margin of error is easily plus or minus 5% and probably a bit more than that even. So it's a ballpark estimate. The voter registration and voter turnout numbers, these come from the state of California, well, the base data comes from the state of California. They take the voter lists from each county and run them against Census Bureau surname list, identify Spanish surname, Asian surname, and Filipino surname. We use that data, and the Census Bureau has an estimate of whether the net Spanish surname undercounts or overcounts the actual Latino population. So we get our Latino estimates by adjusting, actually upward a little bit, the Census finds the surname list slightly undercount Latinos.
We have a problem here in Heaven Bay because of our Portuguese community.
Correct.
And many of those names sound the same as the Latino names. So is there any way to figure out what's going on there?
Not really.
Okay.
You know, it is a challenge. If you have a large Filipino community, you also have that issue, because one of the things the state does that's very controversial is they run all the names through the Spanish surname list first. So if someone's name appears on both the Spanish and the Filipino list, they actually get counted as Latino and not as Filipino. So these are the challenges of using surname data. It's part of the reason why the courts rely on the citizen voting-age numbers. Even though they have a large margin of error, they're from an actual survey where they ask the person, what ethnicity are you? So that's more reliable. So these are, again, ballpark estimates. You know, given the challenges of surnames and all, and the numbers about citizenship for Portuguese definitely caught my attention, these are ballpark estimates, again, if something's 21 and something else is 23%, statistically, they're identical. You know, there's no, neither one is better than the other. The numbers down below are, where it says ACS Population Estimate, that's the American Community Survey, that's that annual survey the Census Bureau does to update the numbers. And this data that we're using here is all from the, was gathered between 2012 and 2016. So it's gathered over a five-year period. There we get estimates of age, not seeing a lot of big jumps. Immigration, just in terms of what percentage of the city is immigrants, and what percentage of those immigrants are naturalized. Want to emphasize, because this question always comes up, does that mean the rest are illegal? No, there are millions and millions of Americans who are here perfectly legally with permanent resident status that are not naturalized. So that, obviously, any attempt by the government to go door-to-door and ask people, are you illegal, would not be a very reliable result. So I do want to emphasize that. Language spoken at home, we include because that often is something people look at as a community of interest. You don't get a lot of that here, but about a quarter of the city speaks Spanish at home. We always, then the next category includes speaks English less than very well. The Census has a weird way of doing this. They report two fluency levels, you speak English very well or less than very well. That's the only two numbers we get. And it's interesting, you get 26% of the city speaks Spanish at home, 9% speaks Asian or another language. That's 35% of the city speaking another language at home, but only 16% are not very well English fluencies. So this is always worth highlighting, that people are speaking another language at home by choice. About half of them speak perfectly fluent English as well. We used to use the Spanish spoken at home as a language isolation identifier for neighborhoods. It doesn't really work here, because so many of them are perfectly fluent, doing it by choice. Education level, fairly straightforward. This is something some people can use, so say, well, this map has one district that is not as high education level, it increases the chances of, you know, a more diverse education level council if you draw that. Children in the household can be an issue. Percentage employed is fairly straightforward, you know, it's fairly balanced across the board. Income, and then your multifamily, single-family housing, and renters versus owners are two things that often are focused on as community of interest definitions. If you have a city that one large part of it is clearly renters, you know, another large part is clearly single-family homeowners, you know, that's probably the most important number in Santa Monica, in cities where there are very active renters. But most of this data is provided in case someone wants to use that or considers that a community divide and wants to focus on drawing lines that would bring representation to a group that they felt hadn't been used. You don't have to refer to this data, it's just simply, everything from the ACS Population Estimate down is there if people want to look at it and use that as a definition.
So just a quick question. So the totals to the very right, those are averages of the numbers across?
No, because the, the numbers vary. What's a good example? Like, if you look at voter turnout in 2014, for map 106, the last page of the packet I'm sort of looking at, you've got 1,300 voters casting ballots in proposed District 4 and 795 casting ballots in proposed District 3. So it's actually separately counting up the citywide total and calculating, and it's not an average of the other four.
Okay, all right. Thanks for that explanation.
Just a comment. Mike Ferrera is absolutely right, it's very difficult to actually make a tremendous difference to allow our Latino population more representation to, period. Not that it isn't a desirable aim, and I understand that's really the goal of the CBRA, but we shouldn't kid ourselves that it's an easy task. And when I go look through these maps, I have a hard time making up my mind. I have my own personal preference. Is this the appropriate time to talk about what I would like to do?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm prepared to do.
Okay. I have two favorites. Draft number 1, because of this compact nature and it just, and keeping the downtown area together. And then my second favorite is Draft 4. I understand what Maria said about gerrymandering, but I think the advantage of having the senior citizens in the downtown area and the senior citizens in Canyata Cove as part of the same group is a very good idea. So those are my two favorites. And I can't really say that the others are bad, it's just that 1 and 4 appeal to me the most.
So my clear favorite is 106. And with, I'd like to recommend one tweak, but what I like about it is that, so it sort of has a downtown core area, and it seems to, like, for instance, 3 mixes some different demographics, which I like. It also includes the areas, I think, that are most intensely populated by the Latino community, both Spanish and Portuguese. And it basically breaks the area up west of Highway 1 into, you know, two pretty contiguous districts, with the one issue of 2 extending south of Kelly. I think that Kelly is kind of a, sort of an important boundary in the community, and I would recommend, actually, for District 4, taking that up to, it's up to Kelly in one portion of it, but I would put all that area north of the 3 boundary, west of Highway 1, into 4. I think you can do that without making, you know, taking it over a 10% difference, but if not, you could probably borrow from Number 1. So you get a, you get a nice core with a diverse community in Number 3, and 4 and 2 basically seem to make sense geographically and also share demographics. I kind of don't like the idea, I know that Canyata Cove is an over-55 community, but it's more, it doesn't quite match the sort of senior demographics in the other areas, which are more sort of in the, not really assisted living, but kind of a different sort of community. And I think you might, the gerrymandering argument to me is pretty strong there, by taking Canyata Cove out and having the cherry stem up to the other senior community. I'm not totally comfortable with that. I like the diversity that keeping Canyata Cove in brings to that whole District 4. I like the idea of having District 1 also touch on downtown, so that you have two districts basically representing downtown, I think that's a good idea. And I think in terms of contiguous areas and compactness and diversity, I think 106 meets quite a few tests. But I would like to make that one change relating to the Kelly Avenue boundary on 3 and 4. But I think it's the one that makes the most sense to me, and I spend a lot of time just going back and forth.
Yeah, I am torn between 101 and 106. I think 101 is a more compact picture, and it's all on one side of Highway 1. And I like that as a dividing line, I think that's easier for people to understand. I'm definitely in favor of keeping Canyata Cove with the Ocean Colony. I don't like separating out those two. That feels like gerrymandering to me, even though I know it's not considered a community of interest, it's certainly, it certainly is a community of interest in a sense. And I don't want to isolate people like that. So although I think 101 is a little awkward, and it includes Bellevue and doesn't include Grand Boulevard, and has some of Cypress and some of, well, not Cypress, some of Willow, it's a little awkward. If there was another way to do that, I'd be happier, if we could bring the District 3 over into the bottom part of District 1. over into the bottom part of District 1. But I, you know, I don't know enough about the population there to know what percent of increase that might be. I also like 106. It is, it's more compact-looking, but it does divide the people on the east side of Highway 1 into two neighborhoods, and the population on the west side into two districts. So that's, you've got across downtown, you've got 1, 2, 3 districts running from east to west, and that seems like a lot.
I don't see that. I see that 3 crosses, and I think that 3 crosses is actually good because it increases the income and ethnic diversity in Number 3. If Number 3 were just east of 1, there's not a whole lot of diversity in the housing stock and in the community. But if you blend it a little bit over to the west of Highway 1, you make it a more heterogeneous sort of district. The other thing I like about 106 is, so Arlita Park and El Cese Lorraine share a lot in common. You know, I mean, there's mothers groups, and people go to the park together. That just seems to make more sense to me to keep Arlita Park and El Cese Lorraine together for the same reason that folks in Ocean Colony would like to be together. Those neighborhoods are similar. They're along, you know, Railroad Avenue and Popular Beach. A lot in common, this area here.
Which, are you talking about District 3 now?
I'm talking about District 4. I'm talking about keeping as much of El Cese Lorraine and Arlita Park.
Yeah, but you're dividing them. They are divided, right down the middle, into 3 and 4.
Well, I know, but having, you know, if you take 4 and continue it, you know, around the 3 part, 2 Kelly and Highway 1, you're keeping most of it together. It makes sense to me to have some of 3 on the west side of the highway because you're increasing the diversity of that district, more diversity in income and ethnicity, just based on my own experience of what that neighborhood is like. You're having more single-family homes adding to it, so it's not just multifamily dwellings. You're getting more of a mixture. So I like the idea of 3 crossing, but I would like even better if 3 crossed and 4 could wrap around it to include those couple of blocks.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see the east side of Main Street as being non-diverse. There are a lot of single-family homes in Johnston Street, in Arroyo de León, that whole area, and the San Benito, and that's all single-family residences in there. There aren't any multifamily dwellings until you get south of, is it Myrtle there or Seymour?
But you're also getting, you know, income diversity as well, and you're picking up the Hispanic community that's west of Highway 1 and the neighborhoods, right?
Let me look and see what the...
Myrtle Street, Metzger Street, Myrtle Street. I don't know. Just my opinion. I think 3 crossing Highway 1 there makes it a nice diverse district.
Okay, well, I haven't decided yet, that's for sure. Any more comment?
Is it possible to narrow it to 2 and take those out for more public comment? Like if we said 101 and 106?
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would actually suggest not getting down to just one map, but to the degree you can narrow it down to 2 or even 3 at this point, that would help the public focus their comments for the next meeting as well. It's not, just so you know, it wouldn't be binding if someone, if you got a flurry of activity for another map, you go ahead and bring it back, but...
I'm okay with looking at 101 and 106.
Okay, that's, that makes me happy.
Okay. And then I'll take the requests that came in and look at revisions to 101 and 106. So there'll be a 101 and 106, and then a 101B and a 106B, so if you can see where they come from.
Yeah, if the 106B can include that little Area 4 that sort of wraps around and picks up 1 and all of Kelly there, that would be, I think.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. If I may, too, I left something out of my intro I did want to mention as well. We did get a letter talking about the choice between 4 and 5 and concern that, given the small Latino population, perhaps having 5 districts would increase the chance for Latino representation. And I just wanted to note that, while they did talk about a Latino-majority district, they were referring to total population, which is symbolic but really not a legal or really a voting power issue. As you mentioned, none of these districts get anywhere close to a Latino-majority district. And they're all within essentially the margin of error. In fact, one thing the person didn't notice is that in the sample 5-district map that he had drawn, actually, the Latino percentage is lower than it is in MAP 106. So the percentages are so close and so relatively small that there's no dilution from going to 4 versus 5. In fact, some of the 4 maps are better than some of the 5 maps are. So I did want to just put that to rest, that there's no Latino dilution happening by going with 4 versus 5.
Thank you very much. This is very complicated stuff, and you've done a very good job at explaining it.
Yes. And next meeting, we'll get into sequencing, which, there is a report people should take a look at, but with this many maps, it's way too much to get into today.
Okay.
So once you choose a map, we'll get into that.
So is this the only decision that needs to be made this evening? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move on to Item 2C, the first reading of an ordinance with proposed amendments to the city's ordinance regulating accessory dwelling units, or ADUs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We are happy to be here tonight with this first reading of a new ordinance. And for this presentation tonight, we'll be following this agenda. We'll provide a brief background and overview of the ADU ordinance. You'll have time for clarifying questions. You'll be holding a public hearing, and then we'll see, you'll have deliberations and look forward to your decision on this and discuss next steps. The genesis of this is really coming from two places. One is from the city itself, from you, City Council. This has been a priority to update our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and frankly, it's identified in the housing element policy for us to be working on this. But it's also coming from outside. State law has changed, and quite significantly, and we need to catch up to that. And because we're in the coastal zone, we also need to do this within the context of our local coastal program and the Coastal Act. Sarah Clark is our deputy city attorney. I'd like to introduce you to her tonight. Sarah's going to present the next two slides setting context for the state regulations, and then Sarah can field many of the questions later. She is responsible for the nitty-gritty on drafting this ordinance.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening. So I'm going to start with state law, and then I'm going to move into the Coastal Act. And the reason for that is that state law really provides the background, and then the Coastal Act provides some nuance on top of that that really changes the situation for Half Moon Bay. But I do think it's important to start with what the background is. So in 2016 and 2017, the state legislature changed the state ADU law. And the purpose of this was really to limit the city's discretion with respect to ADUs. The goal of the state legislature has been to increase affordable housing, and the state legislature really looks at accessory dwelling units as a relatively low cost and low barrier to entry way of getting more units in the state. So there are a couple of key aspects to that, to the background state law. So first is, it really divides accessory dwelling units into two different categories, those that are wholly within existing development, and those that involve construction of new development, new floor area. So for the wholly within existing development, the cities across the state have very limited discretion as to what they can do to regulate such units. So cities must approve ADUs that are wholly within existing development if they meet five criteria. One, if they're zoned, if they're in an area zoned for single-family residences. Two, if there are no other accessory dwelling units on site. Three, if they're within an existing structure. And this includes not just single-family units, but also accessory structures on site. And those structures can be non-conforming or unpermitted, and the city still has to allow them within it. Four, that there's independent exterior access. And five, if there are sufficient setbacks for fire safety. So if those five criteria are met, the city has to allow the ADU to go into those wholly within existing development locations. Can't place limits on size or other criteria on review of such units. The second category is for what are known as new development ADUs, places where we're adding floor area. So in this area, the cities really have two choices. So first, they can rely on the background of state law. And again, if you just rely on background state law, you're being placed in a situation where you're looking at very limited criteria. So you can't impose size restrictions, setbacks, height restrictions, floor area ratios. You don't get discretion over short-term rental use or owner occupancy. And all areas zoned for a single-family or multifamily use must have ADUs in them. So that's what happens if you don't do anything. But cities also have the discretion to adopt what is known in this area of law as a compliant ordinance. And so cities have the choice of enacting a compliant ordinance that then gets back some of the discretion that state law takes away. And so if you move forward with adopting a compliant ordinance, then you have additional choices specifically about those areas I just mentioned: size, setback, height, floor area ratio, et cetera. But state law nevertheless still says, in certain areas, we are not going to let you have any discretion. And so the areas that the state has really looked at as impeding development of ADUs include things like parking restrictions, utility hookups, discretionary review, such as architectural and design review, and growth control limitations. And in those areas, state law says to cities, "We are going to severely limit what you can do to regulate ADUs with respect to those categories." I'll make a note that the state legislature currently is considering even more changes to state ADU law. There are a number of bills that are pending and have been in committees that pose even additional restrictions on what cities can do. The work that we've been doing is just to address the current state law. We aren't trying to anticipate where state law is going on this. Our hope is that if the state legislature does enact further changes in this term, that once we do the work of bringing the city's ordinance up to this current standards, it will be easy to come back to you with tweaks that would address the sort of changes that we're seeing at the state level. So that's what the background is. That's what all cities in the state are being asked to do with respect to accessory dwelling units. In the coastal zone, we have some additional wrinkles. And the reason for this is that state law says that it does not supersede, alter, or lessen the effect of the Coastal Act. That language is somewhat vague as to what the impact of that is. But in 2017, the California Coastal Commission, their staff issued two guidance memos interpreting that provision and sort of laying out for cities some helpful guidance on how cities should look at that provision and how cities should try and mesh together the Coastal Act and the state ADU law. And so those guidance documents have a couple of recommendations. First, they strongly recommend that cities amend their local coastal programs to address state law. It really says, "Don't bury your head in the sand here and pretend this doesn't apply to you." It says, the Coastal Commission staff is saying, "We want you to look at this." Second, it encourages streamlined review of coastal development permits for ADUs. And it specifically lays out a number of options that cities might add to their local coastal programs to encourage streamlining. So this is through the use of exemptions and waivers, also in sort of looking at how, what the definition of development is. The Coastal Commission does note that we are acknowledging, it does acknowledge local control and that local discretion to set priorities for protection of coastal resources. But it also says that the cities in the coastal zone should comply with state law to the maximum extent feasible. And so we get some discretion to protect coastal act resources and deviate from state law, but it's not sort of whole cloth. And it urges cities to adopt these amendments in the very near future. I would note that the last guidance documents on this point came out in November 2017, and so that's why we have some urgency now. So in other words, how we interpret these guidance documents, the city should comply with state law unless doing so would harm a coastal act resource. So if you're going to make changes to the baseline state law, we really have to be able to tie it to protection of coastal resources, or visual resources, or coastal access. The ordinance that we've developed with input from the community and the Planning Commission really tries to do this. So for the most part, we're taking the underlying state law principles, and Jill will go into the details, but I just want to provide sort of the high-level overview of this. We've taken the state law, applied it generally across the board, and made some tweaks to protect coastal act resources. We've done this in the area of the review process, so we continue to require CDPs for certain types of ADUs. We've done this in the review process to outline what coastal act resources are and to make sure that the city and city staff is looking at coastal act protections for things like ESHA, wetland buffers, that sort of thing. We have looked at the parking issue very carefully. Jill will get into this, but we've really looked at how parking and coastal access interplay and made some tweaks to the parking that really do deviate from state law requirements. And then we've also looked at how Measure D, which is a growth control limitation, should be applied to ADUs. And so those are the areas where we're suggesting deviations from background state law. And with that overview, I will turn it over to Jill.
Thank you. Before going into the overview of the ordinance, I just want to emphasize that the Planning Commission has been working very hard on this to get it to this point where we can have a first reading before you. They had an introduction of the topic in February, and then two really robust study sessions in the spring, and they made their recommendation to you just in June. We've noticed it broadly. We've tried to post on Nextdoor and all the other places where we get the most attention. But we also want to note that, in addition to our community and our commission, we met with Coastal Commission staff, including their attorney, to really look through some of the more technical details relevant to the Coastal Act and LCP requirements. We have also coordinated with the Water District and the Fire District for their input because there are some cross-cutting topics with both of them, and those resolved, in our opinion, quite favorably. With regards to an overview of the ordinance, I can do this very, very quickly, or I can hone in on some of the topics. So what I thought I'd do is go kind of fast, and then if you want to go back and dig in, we can do that, or after public comment, if there's something where we can dig in. I've got copious notes, and we have lots of thoughts, but we thought the staff report was pretty, we held pretty solid and explained things, okay. So Sarah's already noted the review process. The intent is to streamline it. The key points I'd like to make on this are that we try to align it to what we already do now with single-family homes, to acknowledge the same thresholds that we're using for when permits are required. The streamlining includes not having a newspaper notice anymore. And we are also going to be coming back to you with fee amendments, but not just for this item, so you'll see that later, where we're trying to work through reducing the cost. You'll note a couple other things that come up in the ordinance that are pretty picky about processing. These were recommended to us about processing an ADU with a single-family home if the single-family home is new. And then we, in collaborating with the Coastal Commission staff, we're just, we're working out some new communication protocols that we can actually codify. And so if you're wondering what that's all about, we can, we can share more about that. Okay. Where the ADUs would be allowed. Where the ADUs would be allowed. I'm going to touch on this for just a little bit here. The existing city ordinance allows accessory dwelling units in all of your R zones, the R1, R2, and R3, where there's a single-family home, and also allows ADUs sometimes as principally permitted uses, other times with a use permit, but in all four of your commercial mixed-use zoning districts. So we're proposing to maintain that. The draft ordinance picks up two additional areas. One is three, the PUDs that are specified here, they are the ones that are already built out, or as Pacific Ridge is building out. We are not talking about the ones that do not have specific plans or have no development. Only these three, Ocean Colony, Jenna Lane, which is the Matucci PUD, and Pacific Ridge, which is, in their zoning code is, that was Dykstra Ranch. We also have an option for how ADUs could be accommodated in the urban reserve and open space reserve zones if they already have a single-family home. I'm going to spend a moment on this because we have a couple options to pitch your way here, because we did good comments on both of these districts at the Planning Commission's meeting, actually about a couple of them. So with regards to the PUDs, there was concern that their zoning wasn't specifically called residential. And we really believe that it's important to acknowledge that these PUDs are intended for residential use, and they're dominated by single-family developments. So we're still encouraging that they be kept in, but we appreciated the input about design review, the HOAs that are involved, the concern about overnight parking, the context of these neighborhoods as a whole, and concern about density within them. And what we note is that PUDs are a visual resource area in our local coastal program, which gives us a way to acknowledge a connection with the Coastal Act and treating them differently than other residential zones. So an option would be to not allow the detached ADUs in Ocean Colony and Pacific Ridge. And I didn't put Jenna Lane in here because Jenna Lane already has detached ADUs, and those are part of its specific plan. But for Ocean Colony and Pacific Ridge, it suggests they could be attached wholly within or through an addition. Thus, they would look substantially similar to any other addition like we process for homes in those two, well, Ocean Colony now, Pacific Ridge, of course, are new homes. And then because of the parking concerns, require parking in the driveway and maintenance of the parking requirements, because that's part of the design of those areas. And we'd be very comfortable making that change if you're interested. With urban and open space reserve, we were very cautious about the code that we proposed here. We understand these are sensitive areas. We understand that single-family development in these two zones is almost always non-conforming. And that is, it's not our intent to over-improve that, et cetera. So we just want to note, you don't need to, if you're uncomfortable with this, these are zones you don't need to keep in this ordinance, and we can discuss that further. But that's why you see it. And, but that one, you have plenty of discretion around that. Okay, parking. You heard from Sarah that we don't have a lot of wiggle room on parking, but we did look at coastal access impacts, because that is one area that we can cover. And thus, the map in your, it's also, there's a draft map in your ordinance. We're proposing, because some of these western neighborhoods tend to pick up a lot of parking for folks visiting the coast, that these areas would still be required to provide the parking space, the way the code that we have on the books now. And the way that we determined these boundaries, first of all, was wherever parking permits were required, because it's sort of a symptom of having a parking issue because of coastal access. That applies to Miramar, so that's the box in the north. It also applies to Kelly. Then we looked at, frankly, I looked at what I see on the weekends when I tool around town, and also where I get complaints about parking. And so that's why we're showing Wave Avenue and noting that Pillar Cito's offers a lot of coastal access through the Casa Del Mar neighborhood. And then to the south, Alce Sorena and Olada Park include Kelly and Poplar, just about the whole street, and then coming down to the railroad right away. And then you can see the, the street doesn't go through straight, so we're just following Central and First and Alce Sinners to show a boundary. This was vetted with the Planning Commission. We sought their input on it, and we're happy to hear your feedback on these boundaries. Coastal Commission staff was comfortable with this approach. Noting that, by the way, every dot on this map, these little circles on Highway 1 and Main Street and 92, those are best stops. And those best stops qualify as transit stops in the state law, and thus, we are not allowed to require parking within a half-mile radius of those, even though this is not, you know, high-activity transit.
Question then? So are the PUDs, Jenna Lane, Ocean Colony, and Pacific Ridge, are they subject to this transit requirement too, for no parking restrictions?
Well, we're suggesting that the parking is a part of the visual resource of those PUDs, why we would require the third parking place. The parking place could be, though, in the driveway. It could be tandem. But noting also, Pacific Ridge has, most of the houses so far are coming in with recar garages, so they would already comply. And we could imagine wholly within ADUs fitting in those homes. They're large. There's plenty of room. Okay. So that's the difference between your existing and proposed ordinance. Clicking through, short-term rental became quite a discussion with the Planning Commission. We're proposing to grandfather in those that are currently being used for short-term rentals, but to not allow them going forward. And we can talk about the reasons why, if you would like to get into it. Objective design standards. You heard we can't have robust design review. That actually isn't that big of a change from the existing ordinance. We have objective design standards. It's really about matching siding trim, roofing, windows, et cetera, of the existing residents. We got some feedback, though, from the Planning Commission. They wanted a little more creativity. So they said, "Well, if it's attached, stick with the match, because you're adding on to the structure." But for detached structures, they were okay with something different, which would make it easier to do things like a kit or off-the-shelf plans. So that's what we put forward, and you have discretion for that.
So the new laws implemented in 2016, 2017 allow you to, give you discretion over applying FAR? I noticed that some of the new bills, it seemed like there was a question about, can you apply FAR? So I wasn't sure whether you can or you cannot. So I noticed that we were applying it, and I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, sure. So the law that is currently in effect now, it's clear that you can apply FAR as part of a compliant ordinance. You have to take that step. As you note, however, there's a lot of activity at the state legislature. I have to say, my gut instinct is that FAR might get the ax. It seems to be one of the areas in which all of the bills are centered on eliminating FAR as a thing that cities can regulate on. So we don't know, but that's the direction I think they might be headed.
Can you explain to the public what FAR is?
Of course. I appreciate that. FAR is the floor area ratio standard. So it's generally speaking, if you have a lot size that's, say, 5,000 square feet, FAR would limit based on a ratio. Generally speaking, it's .5 in Half Moon Bay, and so total development square footage could be no more than 2,500 square feet.
And that slides right into the context of the maximum unit size that we're proposing. The existing ordinance allows for 700 square feet. We're proposing 800 square feet, remembering that wholly within, we can't limit it, but for additions or detached. So it's a small bump, and it's one that we think will be supportive of some of our applicants, although most of our applications struggle to make 700 square feet fit. We can, of course, dig into that one more. Measure D, okay. This one's interesting, because state law says you can't do this, but we can, because we've got our Coastal Act issue and we've got a ballot measure. We had to do quite a bit of research and actually look at the original, all the old documentation and sort through it, and the bottom line is this: we need to issue Measure D certificates for these units. We're proposing that we do that without an additional cost. Right now, it's about $560 for a single-family home, so we would not be charging that. And it would not be a separate application. It would be processed with whatever application the unit required: a coastal development permit, the administrative permit that we talked about, or if they went straight to building permit, we would just take care of it in that way to maintain streamlining. Occupancy requirements. You have discretion here. The existing ordinance requires that either the ADU or the single-family home be owner-occupied. We kind of got out of the first Planning Commission study session that they were leaning towards lifting that requirement. So we drafted the ordinance in that fashion. At the second study session, we had mixed input about that. And then at their hearing, I think we heard a little bit, one way or the other, the commission recommended the ordinance as you see it without that provision. Staff is completely comfortable either way. I, in fact, was surprised by the change. So we'd love your feedback there. And we're done with the key policy issues. I hope that explained the ordinance a little bit better. If you have more clarifying questions, let us know.
I think that was an excellent presentation. I think you pretty much covered all the real estate there, so to speak.
Yeah, I think we'll take public comment before it goes back to council. That's Paul Gregoriev, followed by Mike Ferrera.
You don't have to pay for these comments, right? So if you have more, or there's a cut rate? I just had a, I had a couple of comments and questions about this. And I'm sure no ADU expert, but I have sat through the Planning Commission meetings and done a little homework. I don't understand, and I guess this is a question addressed to the Planning Department, in what sense would this legislation allow ADUs in Ocean Colony? I don't believe it can do that unless it's going to overcome or overturn the HOA rules and regulations. Linked into that, I heard recently that there was a bill inland state legislature that would have done just that. It would have allowed ADUs to override HOA restrictions, but it failed. On the other hand, another one could be introduced, and it could pass. And I'm really curious as to what the impact of this would be on the ADU situation as an Ocean Colony resident, and I have that concern. I don't believe that Ocean Colony currently allows any new development ADUs. I think they would be excluded. So I'm not sure about that. And the other thing I just wanted to note was the constant reference to the word affordable in this document, but I didn't see any data on what we might expect different sorts of ADUs to cost and be priced at. I have heard presentations by developers in this room who are proposing to do small houses on small lots. And although I'm not familiar with construction costs, people were saying, "My goodness, that's awfully expensive for such a small house." And, "Well, the market will bear a high rate, a high cost for these units." I'm wondering what we think. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mike Ferrera, followed by Chad Hooker.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Mike Ferrer. Fortunately, you have a time limit that I'll have to stick within. I have a high interest in this because I thought this ordinance was just going to catch us up with state law. That's what I thought we were going to go do. But in many respects, we're going beyond state law. Now legally, we can do that, but do we really want to do that? And I speak particularly to PUDs. As you heard, there's a lot of legislation boiling around in Sacramento. They're a little drunk with the idea now. And some of the bills are failing, fortunately, thanks to the American Planning Association and the League of Cities. But that kind of stuff is all going on up there. And so I think it would be a mistake to be opening up zones that we do not, we are not legally required to open. And that would be PUDs, open space, urban reserve. That's not my sole legal opinion. I've called the Coastal Commission staff, and they have confirmed that that is correct. We are not required to do PUDs, open space, and urban reserve. I am happy to see that the limit is set at 800. I think there are some good things here. But you know, a house, you build a house, you're going to have to get a gray-market $70,000 water permit. You're going to have to pay the city, what, $25,000 for sewer permit? And these ADUs don't have to do that. It's a huge, fantastic gift bargain. So why does the city want to take a loss on fees? I thought we had to do fee studies for those things, or at least I've been told that in the past. I am worried about places like Frenchman's Creek, for instance. Have you ever tried to park in Frenchman's Creek? It's very hard. There are no parking spaces. Now little streets. It's difficult for people to walk their dogs out there. Not great planning, but that's where you might be putting additional families, additional cars, additional parking. We have streets that have no curb and gutter. We're working on it, trying to fix it, and that's commendable. But do we really want cars in those streets? Extra cars? Well, see, I could have gone for a lot longer, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Chad Hooker, followed by Tim Weller.
Evening. I just have a quick comment to make and then one question. I think this is a good revision to the ordinance. I think this provides an excellent new housing opportunity. And I think that capturing every opportunity to increase affordable housing is a laudable goal, and this modification to the ordinance does that. To this question that's been brought up of how these become affordable, it's pretty apparent to me that if you've already paid the sort of a tax that Mike just addressed with sewer fees, water fees, city fees, the high cost of getting through a permit process to build a structure, and you're able to house another individual or small family, a married couple, a woman with her kid, in that same structure and not add those fees again, it means that you again, it means that you're able to provide housing at a lower cost, generally smaller is less expensive unless, of course, you're building from the ground up, which this would not do. I also think this ordinance helps us, helps protect ourselves and our city from the blight of homelessness, which is, at least in part, descendant from the prohibitively high housing expenses that we have now. So I strongly encourage you to pass it. I think it's well written. There's been a great deal of thought that's gone into this, and I've read it in detail. And frankly, having seen some of the growth control politics of the last 25 years in this town, I read it with amazement, and I'm very pleased to see what's been written. I do have a question. I don't understand this Measure D thing. It seems to me Measure D was promoted as a growth control ordinance, and it is exactly that. It seems that state law would trump our local ordinance law, so I don't understand how we can include a Measure D requirement in there. Or I guess more to the point, what is the point of requiring it? I know that Measure D, we haven't gotten anywhere near any of these build-out numbers that, you know, would consume the available Measure D certificates, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. So I'm a little lost about why the Measure D thing is in there as a requirement. Okay, thanks for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Tim?
Good evening. My name's Tim Whalen. I live over off of Magnolia Street. And I did attend the previous Planning Commission's meeting, and I thought it was very well presented. The one thing that I'd really like to reinforce that has always deterred me in the past was putting an encumbrance on my deed that I had to have a homeowner occupied, you know, ADU, if I was going to have an ADU. So I strongly encourage that that recommendation be carried, that no owner occupancy is required, even though we intend on being there for the next 20 years. But I just don't like having the thought of having to have to do that. And other than that, I did read the proposal, and I think it's a really good one. So thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for questions or comments.
I'd like staff to address the issues raised by the public speakers.
I will first start with PUD and then Measure D, and then have Jill address the affordability question. So with respect to PUDs, what we're basing this off of is state law says that the local agency should provide, if it's going to do a compliant ordinance, for ADUs in area zone to allow single-family or multifamily use. And so it's not just zones that are designated residential, it's zones that are zoned to allow single-family or multifamily use.
Excuse me, could I just interrupt? You say allow. Is it required that this state law would insist that ADUs be allowed in PUDs and open space reserve, or not?
So from the perspective of state law, there, and let me just start from the background. That's the background we start at, is do it in area zone to allow. State law then says that the local jurisdiction can designate areas where ADUs are not or can be permitted. And the designation needs to be based on objective criteria, such as water and sewer services, the impacts of the ADUs on traffic flow and safety. So under state law, the local jurisdiction can say, "This is part of the city we want ADUs in, this is part of the city we don't want ADUs in." I will note, this is only for new development ADUs. For wholly within ADUs, so ones that are in existing structures, it's any area zone to allow for residential use. So that's the background on state law. So you have some discretion with respect to new development ADUs for PUDs, if you can find objective criteria. As Jill alluded to, in these areas, we could also tie it to the Coastal Act, where if you can make Coastal Act findings as to why ADUs are inappropriate in these areas, then you could say, "No ADUs in PUD areas or in open space urban reserve areas." We feel particularly strongly that the open space and urban reserve areas, that there may be good reasons, under the Coastal Act, to restrict ADUs in those areas as a policy question. So the PUD recommendation is based on the starting point that we want to encourage ADUs in all areas that allow single-family and multifamily use, but we do recognize that there is some discretion. I would also address the question of PUDs and the CCNRs that are in place in Ocean Colony. So we are not intending for the state, or for the local ordinance to trump the CCNRs, to essentially say, "No, you have to allow ADUs even though your homeowners association says you cannot." That homeowners association restriction would remain in place. However, that is a private restriction that is enforced by the homeowners association and by the residents of the area. It's not enforced by the city. And so because of the encouragement for ADUs in single-family zones and this potential new state law that would override CCNRs, we were encouraging, that's the direction we initially took, was to allow ADUs in the PUD areas. You shouldn't let, in other words, you shouldn't let the CCNRs really impact your decision one way or the other. They either will be in place and be enforced by the homeowners association, or state law may override it. Any further questions on PUDs?
Can you go back again and discuss the objective criteria?
Sure. So under state law, for new development ADUs, you could designate areas in the city where ADUs are not permitted, and that may be based on objective criteria, such as the adequacy of water and sewer service and the impacts on traffic flow and safety. That's not an exhaustive list, that's just what's given to us in the--
So you said that's only for new development, that's not currently in existence?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay.
And so if you want to, if you were going in the direction of trying to prohibit ADUs in PUDs or open space urban reserves, all ADUs, including wholly within, it would need to be based in the Coastal Act and not just on objective criteria. So I'll move on then to Measure D. So the question of Measure D came up. Measure D is a growth control ordinance, and state law specifically says that cities are not to apply growth control ordinances to ADUs. However, Measure D is a unique, a unique law for a couple of reasons. First, it was placed into the city's code by initiative, and so the city council cannot easily edit the code without going back to a vote of the people. And in reading through the documents for Measure D, it is clear that it was intended to apply to all new units, including ADUs. There's no exception built into Measure D for ADUs. So that's the first wrinkle. The second wrinkle is that back in the, I'm going to screw up my dates, in the early, you know, mid-2000s, the city tried to go to the Coastal Commission and say, "We want to exempt ADUs from the requirements of Measure D." And so we've been down this route before. I want to apologize, it was in 2014, actually, it was more recently. And the Coastal Commission said, "No, you can't do that," and at least the Coastal Commission staff, and said, "The reason for this is because the Measure D is enshrined in your LCP, and it's part of the way that the city protects Coastal Act resources." So you can't take out Measure D requirements on ADUs because otherwise you end up with an inconsistency between your LCP and your zoning code, meaning the land use plan. And so based on that guidance and the fact that Measure D is an initiative, we feel like the growth control ordinance of Measure D does still apply to ADUs, and that's been supported by the Coastal Commission, and viewing the Coastal Act is really the backbone for that support.
And I'm going to pile on to that just one little bit. Samhain County's ADU ordinance was recently adopted by the Coastal Commission. They don't have a ballot initiative growth measure, but they do have a 1% growth limit, and they are counting ADUs as well. So it's consistent with what Coastal Commission's expecting.
Have Measure D certificates ever been divided?
Not that I know of.
One certificate per unit? There's no way to say, "This is a tiny unit, we only need half of a certificate?"
I wish we could. I wish we could scale them. Yeah, we, not that I know of, yeah.
We were asked that question at the Planning Commission, and we went and looked back at Measure D to see if there's any way of interpreting it to have a half certificate, and unfortunately, there's not. That would require an amendment, a voter-approved amendment.
Thank you.
Affordable by design?
I think I'm supposed to talk about affordability. And I do want to note, I think this could be helpful. We looked at our current activity with ADUs that were, we have applications for. In the last two years, calendar year 16 and 17, in each year, three, only three ADUs were finalled for occupancy in each of those years. So far, year-to-date in 2018, we've had four ADUs come through for coastal development permit review, and that's despite the old ordinance. And we've had four in for building permit. Couple of those overlap because they're moving fast, so we're pleased about that. Now, in terms of fees, I just, I think what's really significant is the affordability of this for wholly within. If the construction has already been accomplished and the tenant improvement to create an ADU, for example, out of a couple bedrooms of a home, we're seeing building permit fees down around $350 to $400. It's really just covering the cost of inspections, very limited plan checking. New development's quite different. You know, there's a wide range of what we're seeing in terms of finishes and construction quality and whether it's prefab or not. Fees for that are, of course, then scaled up, too. There's a lot more work that has to be done for reviewing those building plans. They're more in the range of $2,000 to $3,000. So I just, I thought I'd share that because that relates to the actual cost of the unit. A new detached ADU can certainly cost $100,000 to build.
These are the only fees that the city asks for?
That's true. So the development impact fees do not come into play, because we're treating them as basically an extension of the single-family home use. So traffic fees, school fees, in fact, aren't charged on most of them, park facilities fees, sewer fees, capital outlay fees, none of those come in. For fire sprinklers, it's just a straight across the board, if the existing home is sprinkled, the ADU needs to be sprinkled. If it's not sprinkled, the ADU does not need to be sprinkled.
And that applies to both wholly within and--
Okay, exactly. And no separate water meter is going to be required. We've worked that out with the water district also.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back, if that's all right. Thanks. Thanks. Please take your seats. Okay, we're back to council discussion of the proposed ordinance.
You want to go, Debbie?
Yeah, I can go.
I'd first like to just call attention to all the work that's been done by our staff. You know, Ajolikas, our community development director, and our attorney, who's been working on it. The Planning Commission has spent a lot of time on it. There's been a lot of outreach. I think it's been, you know, a good process. I don't know how much more we could have done in terms of, you know, putting together the ordinance. And it's detailed, but it's clear. So I'd like to just express my gratitude for the process and for the product. That said, I do have some policy differences with the proposed ordinance. And I'd like to start off about the issue of owner occupancy or not. And I do feel pretty strongly about the benefits to neighborhoods by having, you know, a mixture of owner occupied and rental, but not encouraging, you know, transancy in the neighborhood. Therefore, I would like to see either the ADU or the principal dwelling unit be owner occupied. So not both units subject to rental, but to provide a little bit of stability, having either one be owner occupied. And if we find out going forward that's too restrictive, you know, we can revisit it. But that's an important concept to me. And I've heard a lot about that from residents in neighborhoods, some of them longtime residents, who are concerned about... Well, they've had some experience with short-term rentals in the neighborhood, a little bit unhappy, but wanting to make sure that we're looking at neighborhood quality of life. And I think that's an important one. So I'm supporting reinstating that, but just either or. Doesn't have to be both. I'm concerned about the parking. I don't know what we can really... It doesn't look to me like we can do much about the parking. Seems to me if we're converting garages, we should be able to require some parking, you know, off-street as a result of that. I think that's likely to be, I think, low-hanging fruit for people if they have a two-car garage. And then we're putting cars on streets. Many in our community are substandard streets, narrow streets like in Frenchman's Creek or streets in some of the older neighborhoods that don't have curb and gutter. So that concerns me, but it doesn't look like we have a lot of leeway there, unfortunately. I don't like the idea of allowing ADUs in open space reserve and urban reserve designations. The whole purpose of reserving those areas with that zoning is to leave development off those areas in order to not encourage sprawl and to focus your attention on infill development. So I think that's a slippery slope, and I'd like to disallow those in open space reserve and urban reserve zoning designations. I similarly have concerns about allowing it in PUDs for similar reasons. The PUD zoning exists to protect coastal resources, primarily views along Highway 1, but there's also issues of ESHA. And we talk about in PUD zoning clustering development to preserve those features. And we're required to by Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. I kind of understand it for these existing PUDs. On the other hand, you know, for allowing detached and all the other residential zoning designations, the idea that we have three special designations for the PUDs requiring them to have it, you know, within the dwelling unit to avoid aesthetic issues or whatever, it seems a little kind of not very equitably applied, you know, policy. I can kind of understand it for the Jenna Lane because they already have ADUs in their specific plan. That makes sense to me. But I suppose I could live with it in those three PUDs, you know, as a compromise. I don't know what we do, but I think you had a good answer on the HOA question, that that's going to be something that they privately enforce. And we may run up against that, but I can see letting that go. The issue of the fees, I think you've addressed. And I think some relaxation of fees is going to be key if we're going to get affordability out of this. I don't have a problem increasing to 800 square feet. I think grandfathering the existing short-term rentals is a good thing to do. I can't think of any of the other outstanding issues that I need to address, but I'm feeling pretty strongly about those, so.
Can I make one clarification to something you said? So you asked about what happens when we see a garage conversion? And I would just direct your attention. In the ordinance 1833060 deals with the question of garage conversions. The state really recognizes that this is low-hanging fruit, as you said, and people are really going to try and put ADUs in garages. And so what happens under state law and our ordinance is that if the garage was being used to satisfy the city's parking requirements, so if it contains those two spots and you put the ADU into those two spots, then you have to replace those spots elsewhere on-site. So it has to go on-site.
So it does have to go on-site?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be covered, and it can be in setbacks or in...
Okay, I wasn't clear on that. That's good news.
But it has to be on-site.
That's good news.
Can you tell me something about that? Having it on-site, if... Can it be in one of the setbacks? So if there's a five-foot setback on the side, I'm not sure what that setback is. But could you put a parking space in that setback?
Yes, it can go in that setback with some requirements related to driveway configuration and coverage that mimic our existing code. But it can go in that setback. The goal is to prevent... Maybe you should explain this a little bit better. The goal is to prevent too much of the front yard becoming sort of a driveway area.
Right, but the side of the house wouldn't be as much of an issue or in the back of the house? Thank you.
I want to echo... You're finished, babe. I want to echo Councilmember Ruddick's appreciation of all the hard work that went into this, all the meetings with the Planning Commission. I feel equally as strongly that we should require at least the main house or the ADU to be owner occupied. I don't think that's an option, in my opinion. It's just important for neighborhood solidarity. I may be okay with short-term rentals being grandfathered in, but clearly no new short-term rentals should be allowed. I want to echo Debbie's comments about open space reserve and urban reserve as having a different feel from the rest of the residential housing. And I would not allow ADUs in those zone districts. When it comes to PUDs, I feel rather strongly that we would be making a mistake if we allowed them to have ADUs for various reasons. If you want to talk about Jenna Lane, for example, Jenna Lane already has what they call guest houses. So could the guest houses have guest houses? It just doesn't make a lot of sense. Pacific Ridge, the people who live in Highland Park and on Terrace were really upset that the traffic for Pacific Ridge is going to all be going on Terrace. Now, potentially, there could be another 63 units that they weren't expecting. I think it's just opening up a can of worms. And speaking of can of worms, the Ocean Colony CCNRs are all different in the different areas. They have different setback requirements. It's just very, very contentious. We don't know if state law is going to change. So in the time being, until we really get some clarity on those sorts of requirements, I would think it's prudent to not allow ADUs in any of the PUDs. And so that's what I believe we should put into this ordinance. Thanks.
Well, I was going to say, I could support that, you know, for the time being, prohibiting them in PUDs and exploring the issue further. But there's plenty of other places in town where they can be built for the time being, so.
Yeah, it's a one-way street. If we allow them, we're never going to be able to say they're prohibited. But if it turns out that it makes a lot of sense to reconsider it, we can go back and allow it after the fact.
A question about that. Is there a way to allow it in a certain PUD and not in other PUDs?
That's what they're proposing.
So the draft ordinance only allows it in the three PUDs we've mentioned, Ocean Colony, Jenna Lane, and Pacific Ridge. The other ones are not developed as residential zones. That's why we've excluded them from the ordinance. I would urge you on this issue. We may need to have distinctions between wholly within and new development ADUs. If we're going in the direction of restricting ADUs entirely in PUDs, we will need to tie it to the Coastal Act and to the Coastal Act's protections. And so I think we need to have further discussion on that point, if that's the policy direction we want to go in.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for all the hard work. I know it's been going on for months and months, and it's an amazing ordinance, the way it's written. It's very thoughtfully done. I am against any ADU that is not owner occupied, if the home is not owner occupied. So I'm... One or the other must be owner occupied. The PUD question is still up in the air for me. I could see allowing them in a place like Ocean Colony, but then you've got parking problems there. And so I don't know. I don't know where to go with that one. I don't think they're appropriate at Pacific Ridge. So I'd be happy to just not allow them at this station and continue the discussion. A question. How many ADUs do we currently have? Or, excuse me, short-term rental units do we currently have in the city that we're considering grandfathering in?
We're still trying to inventory them. It's kind of tricky. There aren't very many. It's...
Are we talking 20?
Probably less.
Probably less.
10 to 20 is my guess.
Okay, well, I'm fine with grandfathering in a small amount of those. But I don't want to see short-term rentals in any other ADUs. The whole purpose of building ADUs is to increase affordable housing. It's not just as an income producer. Okay. And otherwise, I'd pretty much concur with the other council members' comments. I'm happy to pass the ordinance with the exception of the PUD part of it.
And also the requirement that either the main unit or the ADU be owner occupied.
Yes.
That...
With that amendment, that change.
We think you have three amendments.
Okay.
We heard, all three of you, support owner occupancy of one unit or the other, which is basically retaining what is in our code now. Taking out open space reserve and urban reserve, we believe that was coming forward. And then we heard for the PUDs to take them out, although I also heard you say maybe we'll look at it later, so I'll remember that. And was there anything else? Okay.
Just our thanks.
Okay. So we prepared a recommendation for you. In order for this to be qualified as a first reading, Sarah's going to need to support the amended recommendations. So if you're wanting to make a motion and a second, Sarah can then supplement with the amended language. Yes? Okay, that's how we do it.
That would work. Ultimately, if Sarah wants to go ahead and read the three changes right now, the motion can just incorporate those three.
Sure. I apologize for public and all of you to listen to me read these. There's a couple of places we have to do this in. So looking at the ordinance in Section 1 findings, we would amend Section M to read, prohibiting ADUs in the planned unit development districts is consistent with the city's LCP, which is intended to protect visual resources in these zones. We would also add a new subsection N, prohibiting ADUs in the open space reserve (OS-R) and urban reserve (U-R). urban reserve (U-R) districts is necessary to support the city's LCP, which is intended to limit residential development in these districts for as long as possible. And then to re-letter the remainder of the subsections in that first section one. We would also amend Section 2, which lists the municipal code provision amendments, to delete the references to Section 18.11.015, 18.11.020, and 18.11.040. Those are amendments related to open-space and urban reserve areas. In the ordinance itself, so this is Attachment A to the ordinance, we would amend Section 18.33.030, Subsection A, to read as follows. The accessory dwelling unit is located in an R-1, R-2, R-3, C- D, C- R, C-VS, or C-G zoning district. Likewise, in Subsection 18.33.040, Subsection A, we would amend it to read, the unit is located in an R-1, R-2, R-3, C- D, C- R, C-VS, or C-G zoning district. That is to remove the references to OSR, UR, and PUDs. With respect to subsection, or chapter, section 1833080, Declaration of Restrictions, we would strike all language that is currently in this section and instead replace it with the following. Before obtaining a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit, the property owner shall file with the county recorder a declaration of restrictions containing a reference to the deed under which the property was acquired by the present owner, and stating that, Subsection A, the accessory dwelling unit is a permitted use only so long as either the main residence or the accessory dwelling unit is occupied by the owner of record as the principal residence. Subsection B, the restriction is binding upon any successor in ownership of the property. Lack of compliance will result in the accessory dwelling unit becoming an illegal, nonconforming use subject to the code enforcement and abatement proceedings established by the City of Half Moon Bay's municipal code. Subsection C, the deed restriction shall lapse upon removal of the accessory dwelling Finally, we will remove from the Attachment A the proposed amendments to Section 18.11.015, permitted uses in OSR and UR districts. Subsection 8, or sorry, Section 1811020, OSR and UR district use regulations, and Section 18.11.040, nonconforming structures and uses. Let me just double-check here to make sure I've got everything. But I believe those are the amendments necessary to carry out the three proposed edits, to take out references to PUD, open-space, urban reserve, and to change the deed restriction or declaration of restriction requirements.
Can I have a motion?
Thank you for that. I'm impressed. That was amazing. I move per staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent job. We move on to Item 3B. 940 Main Street Affordable Housing Agreement.
So we were discussing Item 3A, which is the cannabis tax.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were going to pull that.
So I recommend pulling that item and continuing it to a future meeting.
Yes. Do we have to have a motion on that?
Yes, I'd recommend a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I move that we continue Item 3A to the meeting of August 7th. Is that, no?
A future meeting.
I move that we continue Item 3A to a future meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we can do Item 3B, 840 Main Street.
All right, 940 Main Street. Yes. Well, 940 Main Street has a couple typos that I want to, I'm sorry to start with, but we get, I just want to take care of it. The cover page of your staff report, the recommendation, we had the wrong count of units. It was accidental. It's meant to be one unit very low, two units low, and two units moderate. And the same language needs to be corrected in the resolution. The staff report and the res show three units moderate. That was never the intention. The intent is for a total of five affordable units. With that, that will make that consistent with everything else in the report. The item before you tonight is an affordable housing agreement associated with an approval of a tentative map that was made quite a few years ago and then extended a few times. You saw it last summer. A condition of approval was to produce this agreement in conformance with the city's below-market-rate zoning ordinance, which requires 20% of the units to be below-market rate or 4.4. When we saw you, you were very interested in having five units instead of 0.4 of a unit in Lufy's, and our applicant has proposed to do that in that breakdown that I just reviewed. Very quickly, the map isn't before you tonight. It's almost ready to go. The city engineer considers the filing, the timely filing to have been made. The map otherwise would expire on August 3rd, but if this agreement is substantially acceptable to you, then the map will continue and come your way. So I'm just showing a snippet of the map with respect to the affordable agreement here. The applicant's proposing that the affordable units be produced, three in the first phase and two in the second phase, and distributed by income level. And you'll note that none of those units are shown on Parcel 12, which is the parcel closest to Highway 1, which is one of your conditions from before. And there's all kinds of other background, and I know you've had a long evening, and we'll continue to do so, and you've seen this before. So I'll stop here. I know that Mr. Yap could not be here tonight. His representative is here if you have any questions for him, and otherwise, we look for your input on this.
I would say nice work by staff on this, and the applicant. I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution approving an affordable housing.
Oh, you want to talk? Okay, all right. Well, you can still comment.
Yep. We don't yet have a map, and one of the things that I talked to staff about was the fact that there was an option to add an ADU to each parcel and have that be a way of complying with the affordability housing agreement that we have for the article. I would really love to see the owner work with a developer, a planner, to come up with some alternative ideas for parking and for access to the units so that we could put more affordable units in there. And I know that there's some agreement by Mr. Yap to be willing to look at that option. One way that we talked about a little bit today was maybe having an access road in the rear of the property and parking behind so that you don't impinge on street parking so much. So I would just encourage that discussion to be held.
So I move that we adopt a resolution approving an affordable housing agreement with Walter and Lily and Yap for the inclusion of five housing units affordable to very low, one unit, low, two units, and moderate, two units. Income households for a term of at least 45 years within the 940 Main Street subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We move on to Item 3C, Sewer Collection Contract Between the City and the Sewer Authority of Midcoast Side, otherwise known as SAM.
I would comment on that. He's going to do that. They've been moving along with such rapidity. It's...
Seems like I say this every evening I'm here, which is, with the lateness of the evening, I'll try to be brief. And with that, tonight, mayor and council members, I'd like to bring you some update to the contract collections agreement status with Sewer Authority Midcoast Side. And I'll take this on and run through these things, and then I'll obviously allow the representatives and each of you have been involved up to this point with the collections agreement, so there'll be an opportunity certainly for your take on this as well. So, basically, tonight, we're asking for some direction and, if desired, to also take some specific actions, which I'll outline at the end of the presentation. Just a little bit of background and reminder, we started this process in January with the release of an RFP for collection services. That was put out openly and solicited, and five responses were received in a timely manner, of which two we narrowed down to which included Mark Thomas Company and the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side SAM. In March, we came to the council to discuss options for dealing with the collections program, and at that time, we recommended a bit of a hybrid approach, which included bringing Mark Thomas Company in to do some elements of the collection system program, including the fog inspections, fats, oils, grease, and helping with data management. And then also in that role, basically managing sort of the day-to-day oversight of the collections cleaning and ultimately help with the SSO response as well, the sanitary sewer overflows, which hopefully are limited and nonexistent, but can't guarantee that. On May 15th, the city council approved the contracts with both Mark Thomas and SAM, and Mark Thomas Company contract was executed and is in place as of July 1. The SAM board has considered our request, and the general manager placed this on the agenda with recommendations each time for approval on May 7th, June 11th, June 25th, July 9th. And I'd really prefer not to go into all the gritty, nitty-gritty details of that, but to say the least, I think our representatives have been frustrated. I've been to those meetings and been a little frustrated myself. And the bottom line and challenges is that we still don't have an agreement in place for the SAM side of the collections work, which means, on top of not having this resolved, we have Mark Thomas and company on contract to oversee and do work with them and help with training and do these things, and they can't effectively do that work under their contract. So it's a challenge. So, what we are talking about, really the last meeting really came down to with the SAM board, is an issue of Section 5.1, which is sort of an innocuous point of dealing with the cost of unusual costs, which includes such as deductibles for insurance. And the discussion kind of kept centering around, how could we go away from flow-based allocation, which is what we use for the main SAM JPA allocations? And ultimately, the push, there was a push for that. We have recommended a one-third, one-third, one-third. Basically, each agency in SAM, as part of this contract, be responsible for paying a one-third portion of these costs because they're not assignable to the collection system or anything else there. As the SAM general manager put it, if a SAM truck backs into a car in Granada, there's really no way to assign that to Granada, nor is there a way to assign that to any of the other parties. We just equally pay for the deductible, the $10,000 deductible, if that's as high as it goes, and we deal with it, or we pay the $5,000 to fix it and deal with it and split that equally, is what our proposal was. And with that, kind of came this conversation as to where do we go? So, basically, tonight, we would like to talk about a refocusing of the SAM collection agreement, and with that, to focus on adjusting this to a single-year fiscal year 1819 contract as originally proposed and is originally approved by the council. This was a three-year contract. What we're also suggesting is we go with the flow-based calculation for those costs for this one-year contract. It's just not worth the fight, and the costs are minimal, and we've made our point. We've had a good principled position on this. Now it's time to just move forward and kind of allow this to happen, is our takeaway on this. You've fought a good fight, now time to move on to the next issues that are important. Notably, and the reason why we are sort of focusing on this one-year program, is that the general managers of the other districts have identified, and we identified early on when this proposal came in, that we had concerns about the viability of the whole SAM collection program in Year 2 and 3. As we drop down to 50% of our collection system being cleaned, that basically dropped the revenues down by 50% from our side, $310,000, down into $140,000 to $150,000 range, and SAM's costs are fixed. They cannot reduce staffing, they can't adjust those fixed costs. And so are the other agencies, we're going to have to pick up that cost. Or what we felt in retrospect to all of this was, once we sign this agreement, then we would come back and be asked to modify the agreement to include additional monies to cover the costs for this increased services in Years 2 and 3 because, obviously, they're fixed costs, or they're fixed costs, and we have to kind of live with that. And so, as a result, we sort of evolved in our conversations. Now, this is a slide we gave to you way back a few months ago, and the bottom line is, is Mark Thomas submitted an excellent proposal. It was very viable in our estimation. There was some work to be done, as it is with every proposal, but basically, it was a clean proposal, and they have indicated willingness to consider an amendment to their contract to take on additional roles and responsibilities as this council sees fit. So tonight, we are recommending a couple of things, but mainly that we modify the term of the agreement to fiscal year 201819, a one-year only, that we accept the flow-based allocation process for Section 5.1 of the draft agreement that's been submitted. allocation process for Section 5.1 of the draft agreement that's been submitted. We rescind the prior resolution doing all of this. But number two is that basically, in rescinding the resolution, that we, 2018-39, which is the approval, the resolution for the original Mark Thomas contract, that basically, we're directing the interim city manager to initiate negotiations with Mark Thomas Company to modify and amend that project and scope to include the entire collection system, beginning in July 1, 2019. And, you know, the simple issue for us is that it's clear that entering into a three-year contract is problematic for the city and for all the agencies at this point, because the finances don't work in year two or three. Beyond that, we think that a year transition point is a good place to be for SAM and for the other agencies, and for us and Mark Thomas, to figure out what the solution ultimately is, and whether that includes bringing Montero and Granada into the fold with the Mark Thomas contract, which their general managers have never indicated a lack of interest in. And so, we can have that conversation and allow for reasonable discussions about that without the constraint and the compaction of time here with a 90-day notice or 120-day notice or whatever with that. So a year, let's just have this opportunity to talk about it and roll from there. So that is our recommendation tonight. I know it's a shift in policy and direction. However, I think, and this isn't taken lightly, however, we think that it makes the most sense for the city, and we think it ultimately makes the most sense for SAM and the other agencies as well. Whether they will fully acknowledge that at this point, I don't know, but we do think it's an advantage to all. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have some public comment. We'll hear that first. John Zabow.
Where'd all the pickleball players go? I supported them, now they're gone. Jeez. And somebody else stole my notes. I left my notes, so you guys call the break, I walk out, someone comes back, steals all my stuff, and my pen and everything else. Was it you, Mike? Yeah, you got it. You shouldn't trust a guy in a hat like that. My name's John Zabow. I live in Half Moon Bay. I've lived at the same house for 38 years. I've lived on the coast side for 53. And I worked at Sewer Authority Midcoast Side, I have, for 15 years. I am the lead collection worker. In fact, I have two guys that are my collection crew, and we go out and clean all the sewers in Half Moon Bay, all 35 miles of them, have been doing it for 30 years. And I've only done it for 15, but for 30 years, SAM's been doing it, and I think is doing a damn good job. Last year, I think we had one overflow, one SSO, that wasn't caused by an INI because of a huge storm. And I think that's a pretty good record. El Granada had none. I think Montero had one. I mean, that's doing a very, I think, a very good job. Okay. Your Mark Thomas, this whole thing, you had, what was it, 2A? Item 2A about the fees for sewer cleaning, and they said there'd probably be no increase. Well, by my estimation, your RFP almost doubled your cleaning services. $180,000 for Mark Thomas, and I think it was $450,000 for Rota Reader, who was the cheapest bidder besides us. We were lower than them. So now we're talking almost doubling the fees just to clean the sewers. I mean, come on, folks, how can you say that's a sensible, you know, cost-effective way of running the place, when you're just going to double your fees? How can you tell people, have somebody sit there and say, "Your fees aren't going to go up"? What, are you going to have to delve into your $26 million sewer backup, you know, your reserves? Because you're going to have to come up with that money from someplace. We've been doing a damn good job for you guys and for everybody else, and you think it won't affect SAM? I bet you, there's a good chance, three of us are going to lose our jobs over this. And it's not us. We've been doing a very good job for you, for everybody else on the coast side. We're the ones that are out there in the middle of the night when the sewers are overflowing. It's not our fault the pipes break because they're so damn old, nobody wants to pay to fix them. You know, all we can do is clean what's there. If it's broke, it's broke. But now, we're being blamed. We're going to lose our jobs because you guys, Granada and Montero, just can't get along, or whatever the problem is. I don't know what it is. But I'm just, I don't know, just wait till next week before you decide on this. Maybe something can change. But I wouldn't count on going to ground in Montero and getting anything done, but, I don't know, yeah, just had to say something. You know, it's going to cost Half Moon Bay citizens a whole bunch of more money than they're paying now, and I'm one of those people. And I'll be losing my job on top of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Could you address this issue of, you know, increased expenses but not increased fees? I think that was the gist of it.
Well, I assume we're talking about the earlier discussion about the sewer assessments, and I think what Dennis said is, this year, there would be no change in the fees, because we had not completed the rate study. We started about a year and a half ago with work on a rate study. We stopped that work, in part, because we've been awaiting a decision on the IPS litigation. The rate structure is going to be very different if we are basically found that we shouldn't be paying for the IPS-related improvements. It's a, you know, the cleaning is comparatively to IPS-related improvements and costs that we're absorbing in our everyday cost for our ratepayers is significantly less in either scenario. We spent in excess of $1.5 million last year on our share of IPS-related costs. At the worst-case scenario, you know, this year, between the two, SAM and the Mark Thomas, we're looking at roughly a third of the cost or so in that. So the bottom line is, is that rates are going to adjust. We do have the luxury of having a reserve for capital reserve. That is a one-fund basis. In reality, we decided to split them into capital and operations, but the way the structure actually is, is not one. It is one fund. Beyond that, we will be doing a rate study, but again, that rate study is very dependent upon some decisions being made, either as a settlement in mediation process, or as court action on the issue of whether the IPS is part of our cost or not.
So, we're still in contract with Mark Thomas?
Yes.
They will be, even if we were to continue for another year, they will be doing some work for us?
Yes.
And what work will that be? In summary?
In summary, under their current contract, and that would be for the coming fiscal year. They are doing the fog inspections, the fats, oil, grease inspections, dealing with those inspections. They are overseeing the collections cleaning that SAM is doing. They're providing assistance to them, in terms of technical assistance and direction. They are taking over, and they have taken over, the pump stations, pump station maintenance. They have also, will have a responsibility to do some training with SAM. And ultimately, they are also bringing all the data in that's needed and consolidating. In addition to that, they're going to be developing manuals and SOPs, standard operating procedures, for all of the activities that are going on, for our pump stations that haven't been done. And as a reminder, I think, I mean, with John and the crew, our issue has never really been about the crew. It's never been about the people. It's never been about John or anybody else. The real issue, in terms of the program, is that SAM has never been able, and I think it's basically an issue of funding and inefficiencies of public agency, frankly. Any public agency has a struggle with PERS and all the other liabilities and responsibilities that come along with it. Taking on some of these duties and effectively, including, you know, having the agencies agree to pay for developing manuals, developing standard operating procedures for all the pump stations. If you recall, one of the big issues that came about with the state board coming and doing their investigation after the major spill, is that we didn't have operating procedures at each of those pump stations along the IPS. I'm venturing a guess that we probably still don't have those in place, don't know for absolute sure, but I don't believe that we do have those in place and haven't responded. And we need, within our system, to have those in place per our sewer management, our sewer system management plan, as well as what the state board is asking us to do. So those are a lot of things that SAM just has not been able to deliver on simply, and I think it's a simple issue of not, of not, a lack of interest, but frankly, a lack of funding and commitment of the staffing adequate to do that. And that's a cost to all the agencies to do that.
But I think the root cause of that is the structure of the joint powers.
I absolutely agree.
The agreement is faulty. The arrangement doesn't work, because the individual agencies, their first order of business is protecting their own individual interests. And there's a complete unwillingness to negotiate, as we've seen, especially the last month or two. So I think that's the root cause, and that was the root cause that sent us on this path in the first place, as I recall.
I think I could comfortably say that a JPA is an extremely, and any JPA, is an extremely difficult organization to have take on contract responsibilities. They're innately difficult because of the nature of the governing bodies, and this one particularly is difficult. Unlike some where you have representative board, where it's not every person in the JPA actually being a participant, this one is every agency, and every agency is fighting for their turf at the SAM board.
And it's especially problematic, because we're trying to manage a utility that serves environmental purposes, right? And so, when things go wrong, they go wrong big, and they're very expensive, and they damage a lot of, you know, public and natural goods. So this is ultimately the problem that we have to solve. This is just, you know, some of the leaves on the trees, but the main problem we have to solve is the issue of the JPA. Now, I understand that Montero was to have a discussion about this at their meeting last week. Does anybody know? Did they discuss it? What was the outcome? Anybody know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Not heard anything.
I'm guessing nothing has changed. And one of the things that makes me angry is, you know, they had no interest in negotiating to begin with. They could have just said, "No, we're not going there," you know, a couple months ago. So, you know, they kind of strung us along, I believe, and I'm very unhappy about that. We could have made these decisions a while ago, right? So we've spent a lot of time and money pushing something that was going to lose anyway, because Montero's not interested in negotiating, you know, for any reason. So, in any case, just some background, but I'm happy to hear from my fellows.
On a much more parochial issue, as to John's worrying about losing his job, am I correct that nothing is going to happen immediately? This motion is at least six months or more away in terms of actual changes to cleaning or JPA administration or anything like that. There's no absolute urgency. I mean, I agree with Debbie that the underlying issue needs to be fixed, but there's no hair-on-fire kind of action that we need to take. Is that right?
That is correct. What we're recommending is basically a year transition plan here to allow all these conversations to occur, and allow the other agencies to decide how they are going forward. And again, this would not be effective until almost a year from now, being July 1 of 2019.
I'd like to just suggest a tweak. Part three of the recommendation. So my understanding is, Mark Thomas will commence work? And this has commenced work? Fine. I would like us, before directing staff to begin negotiating a new agreement for 2019, let's bring this back in six months and get a report on how Mark Thomas is doing, what they've done, rather than just, you know, out of the gate and perhaps having it be perceived as provocative. You know, bring it back in six months for further direction on a permanent basis. Just this suggestion.
Makes sense to me.
How does that work for you, John?
We serve it, it's a, we serve it at your pleasure. I think David's coming to the same conclusion I am. The concern we have is that in the next three months, we will be sitting down and talking about next year's budget. And so, six months puts us right in the middle of SAM asking you, as the board members there, to approve the collections budget to be sending to us. I mean, that's how tight and close we are with process timelines, so that's the challenge. And it's why we didn't wait for another two months or three months to bring this to your attention, is that we knew in October, November, the general managers were all going to be talking about, how do we fund year two of this contract? And Granada's going to come forward with their contract, and I don't know how the SAM board approves their contract with a known structural deficit occurring if they approve ours. I mean, it's a structural deficit of significant proportions if Granada chooses to go to a 50% cleaning of the system. So that's why we were looking at this, is that gives us adequate time to look at it and roll from there. Now, you've given us direction. You know, we can still continue to look at the options, and I think that we've always been, in the back of our minds, looking at the, you know, whether it makes sense for a public agency like ourselves to potentially take on cleaning of our collection system and working with the other agencies to do that, and whether this is a transition, three or four years down the road, of basically going back, which is not uncommon among cities to take on this deal. It's a potential, you know, we're all sort of looking at, what are the most cost-effective ways to deal with this, and the best way to protect the interest of the city and of the environment.
Well, certainly in parallel, I want us to be exploring this, a new solution to governance here.
Yes.
That's, you know, that's not a short-term thing, but I want us to be rolling on that and, you know, making some progress. But certainly, I think for the coming year, we know what we have to do. And certainly, we want a solution that works in years going forward, so. I think you, go ahead.
Only, I don't think we, I don't think our intention is necessarily to bring back a new amended contract with Mark Thomas in the next 30 days or 60 days. I think we can, we can drag a little bit that out. We need to figure out, we're as concerned as well about the contractor, and this is a good test drive for us as well, to figure that out.
Took a quarter, you know, three months.
So I think we will take, we would not look to bring back that agreement, that modified, amended agreement, whatever, for at least two to three months out, anyway. It's going to take that long to really work through and get the numbers, and to really narrow down that contract. So I don't think there's going to be any action, but that puts us, I think, at a great time, if there is a great time, because that'll lead us right into the point of talking about the budget and starting those conversations in total with each of the general managers.
I really look forward to that.
We need to at least do part one of the recommendation. Are there certain things, actions we have to take there?
Well, staff would recommend both parts of that, because we can, you know, we, because part two does not include a specific timeline to bring back to the council.
Okay.
But it just means we're working toward that. But in three months, you know, we could come back, and there could be a shift in the direction, and that's possible too.
I move to accept staff recommendations about the SAM issue.
Second?
Oh, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. That takes us to item 3D, Half Moon Bay Terrace Water Basin.
Mayor and council members, once again, I'm Mr. Popular here with bringing this item. So, hey, Maz. I thought Maz should take second seat, since this one will be such a pleasure within, within everybody's deal here. So, this is something that sort of came out of nowhere for, for staff. Literally, all of a sudden, we received an, an email from the county saying, "Are you aware that the 30, that the 60-day review period is going on for the Half Moon Bay Terrace Basin?" And there's this whole process, and there's all these things going on. And gee, if you want to participate, here's a couple of ways to participate, which we thank them for that. Because basically, DWR, Department of Water Resources, had informed the local water agencies, but they had not been really thinking about the land use agencies that were going to be impacted by this. So, I think in part, it's sort of an indicator of the challenges that we're dealing with, with, sometimes with the very scientific water agency and not looking at the other perspectives of that. In any event, we are looking at the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which here is all the, the three laws that collectively represent that. And I have stolen pretty much the presentation that's attached to your packet, hope that the community and you have had a chance to look at it. So, I'm going to run through this pretty darn quickly, and, and, but basically, I've stolen from most of it and added a little bit there. So, again, this became effective on the, in 2014, and there were some basins that were absolutely kind of right on the top, the no-brainers that were absolutely in overdraft, and they got first run at this. In 2018, there was a list of other basins that had been designated as low and very low. Ours was a very low priority presently. And they took a look at those, scored them on the scoring categories. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And those came about as part of their 2018 package that's now under consideration by the city and all the agencies. So, basically, anything in this deal's high or medium priority basins has an obligation to process through a plan for, basically, a 2040-42 fixing of the, of the groundwater issues and the sustainability.
Can I just stop you?
Sure.
What's a basin?
Let me get, let me do this. So, the basin we're talking about is the Half Moon Bay Terrace Basin, which is basically alluvials, basically alluvial soils, not the mountain tops, not the mountain edges, but basically alluvial soils, basically, that have been working through here, that basically formed a, an area of, of subterranean underground water that's recharged through rain and, and permeability of those soils and everything like that. So, this runs from roughly up a portion of Montero, not entirely Montero, down to basically Tunedus Creek is this Half Moon Bay Terrace area. And you can see Half Moon Bay sitting right in the, right in the middle of that basin. So, that's what we're talking about. And, so, in that map, you can also see the San Mateo Plain, which is under consideration, and the West Side, which are two other groundwater basins. And basically, those basins, and correct me when I'm saying this all wrong, but basically, those basins are made up of the areas that, that, that the, feed into those areas, like a lake that's underground, and those are the areas. So if you have a drainage basin, it's the same concept. A portion of those areas feed into that area, and they go. And so-
It's the aquifer?
It's the aquifer. So, but those are fed within those specific areas and are recharged through those areas. And they don't, they don't necessarily meet. So, there are actually in San Mateo County, three different basins that are under consideration for this designation at, as a, as either a medium or a high priority. We are one, and these two as well are going. So our neighbors to the east are also having these same conversations about their basins, but they're different, a little different than ours, and going from there. So, basically, in a nutshell, the state is concerned about six categories of, of basically degradation and undesirable results. And these are pretty straightforward and pretty self-explanatory. And in our basin, they've particularly sort of landed on three areas of those concerns in their scoring, and I'll talk to that pretty quickly. Basically, what they have landed on is, is that we have, based on countywide growth and statewide modeling, rampant population and population growth in the coastal areas that are putting this basin at risk. We think that's kind of problematic as a, as a evaluation and assessment. And again, I think the work they've done is great work as a whole, but they've used models that are statewide models that are very large scale. They've looked at the county growth, not the issues of coastal commission, coastal zone, and our own growth management regulations and things, including the counties and the cities. So we, we, we take issue with the fact that, that they, we scored as high as we did on population growth in the scoring, and we'll, we'll provide input back to that point. We also scored pretty high in terms of the groundwater use. And frankly, the groundwater use is the crux of why we're, why we're going to be potentially looking at this program, because they've shown a, a pretty large jump in the amount of groundwater usage, basically from agricultural use. And that bumped us into a level which basically then bumped us into, basically going into a, a high priority area. So our-
Is that background where we use from, in Half Moon Bay, in the terrace?
An entire terrace, in the entire terrace. A little bit, some of that is in Half Moon Bay, but the vast majority of that is outside, and frankly, to the south is where a lot of that's occurring.
Part of the same terrace.
But it's part of that same basin. So we're all kind of in this together because we all have one aquifer, one basin that we're dealing with. And, and as indicated in the staff report, CCWD, for example, is using less than 1% groundwater in their entire supply of, of water. So the rest of their water supply is coming from SFPUC waters, and ultimately, that could be even further supplemented by recycled water, for example. And in many ways of recycled water, but take the sand plant recycled water project is another, is one example. And then ultimately, the groundwater impacts. And what we're most frustrated with, and I think the rest of, or many of the, of our fellow folks in the state that are facing the same issue, is that they chose to put a high priority scoring basically on iron and manganese. And without getting into details, that's a naturally occurring constituent in groundwater. And, and it can be readily treated. And we're trying to figure out why that was such a significant issue to deal with. And other folks are having the same problem. To Healdsburg, the CCWD went and visited the meeting in Healdsburg, and the same issue kept coming up from a lot of the folks and everything. And I, and I think the best way that the staff can kind of put it is, if we're designated and we have to go through this, this, this process and this plan and develop and create this agency of some form and everything like that, how are we going to fix iron and manganese in the, in the basin? You're going to treat it when it's pulled out. And so why do you need a groundwater management plan to tell you to treat the water, you know, for iron and manganese with typical standard treatment capabilities, which is what we're doing anyway, and what they're doing in, in Montero? So that's one of those areas where we, we're just concerned about it. And again, I think the, the biggest challenge that every agency that we're talking to and staff is that we all agree with the ideal of protecting our groundwater resources statewide. We've seen what's happening in the Central Valley. We see what's happening in San Luis Obispo. We see what's happening in the Imperial Valley. You know, and, and there are a lot of very, very critical basins. Frankly, we just don't see this one as being in that same mode and same level of that, which doesn't mean that we can't and shouldn't be looking at protection of our aquifer and our basin. It just means we're not sure that this is the process.
I think we're, we've been ensnared into this bigger statewide trend toward centralization, right? I mean, they want everything to be regulated out of Sacramento. They want it to apply to a standardized set of guidelines, but everything's going that way. It's not just groundwater, right?
Yes.
So, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger trend, and I don't know how we like that.
Yeah. I, I think the, I think the interesting part of this is, is that the statement on their, on their presentation that you received is keeping groundwater control local. Well, then you get this, which is, which is DWR basically doing, and the state staff doing all of the, the scoring, making rather, we believe, some rather subjective opinions, taking some, you know, with, with statewide kind of basis deal with that, to score and identify and change our basin from a very low to a high priority basin. And nothing about this feels like this is local groundwater management and protection and working, because it mandates various actions, various issues. And ultimately, they tell that local agency what they're going to do in essence, in their plan.
Is there anything that we are not doing that we should be doing, or we could be doing better?
I think-
Is this going to help us in any way?
I, I don't think we need this to do the things that we should be doing.
No, I understand that, but, but are there things that?
Well, I don't know. And here's the, and that's, that's about as good as I can get it. We really do believe that, that there was an over, there's an overstatement of the groundwater usage for agriculture. And the time that it will take to actually run those numbers and start to work through that, and, you know, is, is in the matter of not, you know, a couple of months, but in multiple months, and we don't have the kind of time. I think the Resource Conservation District, I think we all agree that having that data at the local level is an important thing, and this would be advantageous in terms of, we'd certainly have that. But again, we could do that much less expensively by just agreeing to do that and, and even funding that with the water agencies or whatever to do that, to their benefit, to keep us out of this. So I do think there's information that would be good to have that we don't have consolidated in. Again, it's the process that gets there, and this is an extremely expensive way to get the information that we can have. The other side of that is, there is a lot of information that's occurred since 2014. And keep in mind that the state, rather arbitrarily, but for the reasons that Sigma became effective in 2014, that was, that was the, the base year. So they don't consider any information that we have after 2014 as being something that they will even consider, because everything is on a 2014 basis. So we have a lot of detail. RCD has done a lot of studies, a lot of work, and we're going to present those to them. But they've already told us, in essence, that that information, while interesting and helpful in the future, is not going to be a deciding factor in their decision-making here, because 2014 is the base year and below that. So 2000 to 2014 is what we're looking at.
So I'm guessing that all the work that Barry Heck did, like for Montero, around 10, 2010, 2012, is, they're not interested in?
Well, 2010, 2012 is good. Anything up from basically 2000 to 2014, they will consider and look at. And Montero's working on, on their response. And remember, the interesting thing about this is about, only about 20% of Montero's water actually comes out of this basin. The other comes out of the, the aquifer, you know, to the north from that point. But they're, they've done that work. So I don't know how much of Barry Heck's work included this basin, or whether it was more focused on the other where their big well is, which is not in this basin.
No, he, he did reports like from Pillar Cito's Crete North, so there's, yeah.
So there, so all of that can be included. But RCD, for example, has done a ton of work in 2015, 2016. We're, we're being told that, that, that that information is not something that they will consider and look at. Well, they say they'll consider it, but it's really not part of it, because all the modeling and everything was based on the 2014 base year. So, in the end, what are we looking at in terms of process and timeline? Right now, their schedule had us at February of 2019, telling us yes or no that they were going to modify or not modify the basin. They gave us the 30-day extension, so we may see additional, that may be March or later February or whatever with that. I don't know whether they're going to compress their schedule and still make February or not, but we're looking at February or March, unless something changes significantly for a decision to come out of DWR about whether we're in or out. And so ultimately, if this ultimately occurs, we must form some form of, of agency or agreement that pulls together within two years. And within three years of forming that, for a total of five, we have to develop our plan and have that approved and in place. And, and so unlike some of the other, the folks that started in 2014, 2015, they actually had the two years to form plus five years. So they actually had seven years total. And with the 2018 package, we're even getting limited by, and compacted by another two years to a total of five if we are designated. So that's an area of concern and issue that we've raised. So tonight, we, we don't know what the next steps are ultimately going to be. We know what the schedule is. We are asking for your authority to send a letter and, and information to DWR, laying out our arguments as to why perhaps this basin shouldn't be designated as a high priority. And we're also working closely with CCWD, Montero, with RCD, the county, and any other agencies that want to work and talk to us and collaborate with us, to share information, for them to share information, and to have the best possible documentation and information that, that reflects our strengths, their strengths, and we build from that point a somewhat consolidated document and letter. And that letter, unfortunately, the reason we're here tonight, and not later on perhaps, is that the letters are due August 20th, which would be the day before what is your next regularly scheduled council meeting. And so we wanted to get on this and up and running, so we could get your direction to do this. Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Move per staff recommendation?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maz. That takes us to 3D, or 3E.
We did 3D.
No, we've done 3E. It takes us to 3F.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Glad to be before you this evening on this final item of the evening. We are here to present the labor agreements that have been negotiated with our staff for the period July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. With me is Sandra Ricky. She is our Acting Administrative Services Manager and serves as our primary HR leader and working with all of the labor groups that we work with, and has done a fantastic job kind of navigating this process for us on a little bit of short notice. So, we appreciate the work that she's done, and she'll be presenting some of this information. Just by way of background, our current contract with- Just by way of background, our current contract with all of our represented units expired on June 30th, 2018. So, we're currently outside of contract, but hopeful that we can move forward and have contracts with all of our employees. What we're presenting tonight affects our three of the groups, our operating engineers' local number 39, represented management group, and the non-represented confidential group. The fourth group, which is non-represented management, comprises the members of our executive team and will be bringing forward proposal for salaries and benefits for that group at a future meeting. So, just by way of background, as we talk about the negotiations that we had with these groups, the, the goals that we really focused on during this negotiation period kind of were twofold. One was really thinking about our employees and what can we do and what can we offer to retain the valued employees that we have and also attract new quality employees as we continue to grow the organization and fill vacant positions and replace staff as they leave. And the three areas that we think are really important are to have competitive wages, you know, we know that salaries aren't everything, but we have to remain competitive in order for people to consider making the decision to come here. Quality benefits, so that we know that our staff are really being taken care of from a healthcare standpoint and other areas of their life that when they don't have to worry about those things, they can focus on the work that they're doing and the impacts that they can make on our community. And the other area that really is a focus is flexibility. By giving our employees an opportunity for some good work-life balance, we find that people are happier, more productive when they're here and are more likely to stay for the long term. The other side of the coin, of course, is making sure we're protecting the long-term interests of the city. First and foremost, we're concerned, as many cities are, that any decision we make doesn't adversely affect our long-term pension obligations, which for many cities are a big issue right now and we don't want that to become a major issue for us here. Along with that, we think about just our ongoing labor costs. You know, every time we hire staff and offer them a benefit or some sort of compensation, we have to think about the long-term impacts, not just the immediate impacts of offering those, those benefits. And last is just looking at ways to improve the contract language so that we have as much flexibility and operational efficiencies as possible. So, those were really the guiding principles we followed as we worked with staff and we really found staff to be very cooperative and coming together to really negotiate a contract that I think is fair and accomplishes these, these items. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sandy to go through just some of the high points of the contract. You've seen the details, we've talked about it in closed session. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sandy.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to thank the city council and the negotiation team for all their hard work over the last four months, working hard to come up with this contract for, for the city. One of the key elements that I'd like to highlight is the contract includes a 9% increase, cost of living increase over the next three years. The other one is a city will match up to 2% of employees deferred compensation contribution. And this also includes several other changes that will improve the, excuse me, improve the city's ability to attract and retain city staff. And the fiscal impact of this agreement is going to be, over the first year, will include $234,000 and over the entire term of the contract will be approximately $1.1 million. And that includes all of the contracts.
So, with that, we'll give you the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions or if we have any public comment. And then our recommendations are to approve the, the three agreements before us today.
No, I'm, I'm very familiar with the agreement after the, the last few meetings, so I, I think my questions have been answered and I'm happy to support the, the new MOU.
What she said.
Same goes for me. You guys have done a fanatical, fanatic, fantastic job. Pardon me, it is 10:30. Fantastic job and I'm all set to approve the agreement. I'm, I'm so happy we have a three-year agreement. That's the biggest thing for me. That's great.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU between the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 39 and the City of Half Moon Bay for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU between the representative, representative management team and City of Half Moon Bay for the period July 1, 18 through June 30, 21. And adopt a resolution approving the compensation and benefits plan for confidential non-represented employees for the same period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe that concludes this city council meeting. Thank you all for attending.